Sorry, I just put my head just put my AV on there and help chase you out. I think we're good.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Hi, everyone. Happy Tuesday, March 1st. I can't believe it's March. Tonight's meeting is being conducted on the Zoom platform and being live streamed on Cohasset 143 TV and our town Facebook page. The public is invited to participate on the Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of the posted agenda for tonight's meeting. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called on by me. Board members will be able to ask questions of any participant in all votes taken tonight. Will be by roll call vote. Please note that comments on Facebook and other platforms are not being monitored. And this meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on Cohasset 143 TV. Now like to call this meeting to order with a roll call vote.
Jack right here. Corey Evans here.
Emily Dippel's here.
I am Kennedy here.
Carrie Thompson here. All who would like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please do. Got our flag right here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So we're holding off on public comment to get this first part of our meeting done and I wanted to start just by briefly making a statement here. I've, you know, thinking about saying the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. After what the world's been going through the past couple of weeks, I feel like it hits a little different and feels a little differently. And watching what's happening across the world right now, watching a place like Ukraine trying to protect and defend their democracy. I think in a way that needs to be a real perspective check for us. Cause our democracy here at home and here for us locally as a community, I think we have to remember is based on an idea. And it's based on that fundamental value that shared government governance and representative government matters. It is based on an idea that we should be able to be peaceful and civil when having dialogues about these issues. And tonight is the State of the Union address for our country too. So this is my little mini brief state of Cohasset statement. Because I feel like Cohasset is not immune to what we are seeing happen across the country and the world. And we are seeing an undermining of democracy at all levels. And those of us here right now. It is because we care about this community and care about the wellbeing of our town. If you are watching this meeting right now, if you were on Zoom, if you were on Facebook, if you were on our lovely 143 TV channel, it's, it's because you're here because you care as well. And our community has been actively engaged recently on a number of town related issues. Some have been more controversial than others, but I want to start by saying to all the residents and community members who have reached out to share your opinions, to share your thoughts and experiences. I want to thank you for being involved and for caring enough to take the time to communicate with us. We need to always encourage active participation in our town. And democracy only works when we can engage in constructive discourse and have a free exchange of ideas with each other. The discourse these past few weeks though, has not always been civil and respectful. And seeing our community as divided as it is in this moment is upsetting. Seeing our neighbors, seeing our friends, our families battling it out on social media, attacking each other, attacking us as elected officials. And spreading rumors and misinformation online is scary and disturbing to watch. These coercive tactics should not be tolerated and we need to hold each other accountable for our words and our behaviors. Because words matter and it's unacceptable to hide or other members here recently have been harassed and been threatened. Threatening an elected official at any level is a threat to democracy and democratic ideals, and we should be better than this. Now granted, being in public service and serving our community isn't always easy. And I think it's reasonable for all elected officials to be willing to take and accept criticism. But the toxic nature of discourse that is played out in our town, the past couple of months is going to hurt the quality of volunteers and board members. And citizens who put their names forward in the future to run for office or serve on a border committee. So I think we need to have a shared set of expectations and community standards where we hold ourselves and each other accountable. I think this means demonstrating respect and consideration and civility for everyone in our town. Whether someone has lived here for five generations or five years or five days, they deserve to be heard and respected. It is okay when we disagree, but we need to be willing to listen to each other. And this means respecting our fellow citizens. Our fellow elected officials, our town volunteers, our board and committee members and our town staff. So in general, I think we need to do better. I think we need to do a better job of uplifting civil discourse. I would like to ask that we also try to have a sense of perspective about where we are sitting right now. And remember where we live and why we are lucky to live here. Let's try to remember why we love this community and the people in it. And I want to ask that we take the temperature down and show more civility and consideration for each other as we move forward tonight. And I want to begin our discussion now by welcoming our town council here tonight, Carolyn Murray, as we weigh in on this process. And also remind everyone that it's not appropriate to discuss individual names as potential job candidates or hires before an official hiring recommendation happens. So I will let Carolyn weigh in on this briefly, and then I'll allow our town manager Christine here to make a statement as well. Carolyn, hi. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to the remaining members of the board. I think the chair has kind of covered the point, but I think the concern was that you were coming into this meeting tonight with an expectation that there would be a discussion with respect to fire chief appointments or fire chief candidates. And I think there's two things to bear in mind here as the discussion goes forward. One is obviously under the open meeting law, the board is only able to discuss topics that the chair reasonably anticipated and that are actually listed on the agenda. So I certainly see that you've listed the fire chief appointment. But there it's my understanding that there and certainly it's not listed on the agenda. That there is no actual discussion of any particular candidates that's being brought forward this evening. The other aspect of the open meeting law has to do with when we, when we do discuss individuals in public, we have to be careful. And I have no idea who might say what this evening. So this is not being said in any manner other than to just caution the board members that, you know, if, if conversation is going to veer towards discussion about individuals. We have to bear in mind, you know, that individuals have a, a property interest right in their reputation and their character. So we want to be careful because the open meeting law would, would guide us to actually discuss anyone's reputation and character in executive session with advance notice to those individuals so that they have an opportunity to be present and to, 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 you know, defend themselves or to respond to anything that might be said. So I just want to remind folks that I know you're, you're perfectly well versed in the open meeting law, but these just a couple of things that might just guide you as you start to have your discussions this evening on this topic.
Perfect. Thank you, Carolyn. That is helpful. We're glad you're here. All right, Chris. I know you would like to make a statement.
Thank you, Carrie. And please bear with me. I'm actually going to read a little bit longer than I usually do tonight. So, but I promise I'll be concise. At the conclusion of a successful recruitment assessment and interview, interview process for the next class of fire chief. I anticipated that I would formally put before the select board of the class community that individual. Instead, I find myself prepared to ask this board for further direction on next steps. As a combination of factors have so heated up the community that appointing the leading candidate for that position, much less anyone else, is currently impossible. Before I turn to the board with my questions, I turn to the community to explain why we're here. My charge as town manager under the class of town manager act is to select candidates based on merit and fitness alone. Following that standard and working with the town's human resource office, the town has developed job descriptions, qualifications for positions. And successfully hired staff across departments, including directors for the library, health department, senior center, a building commissioner, finance director, two successive directors of human resources, among many others. While the town now has well-developed processes for these kinds of hires, hiring a fire chief, which I am also required to do on merit and fitness alone, involves some extra steps, which I'd like to explain further. Cohasset is seeking a new fire chief after 15 years for only one reason. The Commonwealth sets a mandatory retirement age for public safety workers. Cohasset's longtime chief reaches that mandatory retirement age next month, April of 2022. That deadline has not been a secret and has been a topic of numerous conversations over the past several years, formal and informal, in an effort to ensure a smooth transition. Last fall, public conversations on this succession began with the scope of a recruitment and assessment process discussed and approved of the October 19th select board meeting. Input was sought and received on the specific qualifications and goals for a new fire chief. And a decision was made to find a firm to manage both the recruitment and assessment of candidates. A firm was procured after a public process and the principals leading that search made a public presentation at the select board meeting of November 16th. The team, a well-respected former fire chief and an equally well-respected former town and city manager, described for the board and the public, the steps in the process, presented the recruitment materials, which included qualifications and expectations for fire chief candidates. And discussed how they would run an assessment center for the final three to five candidates. Let me take a moment to explain what an assessment center is all about. Well, civil service promotional testing is the basis for the civil service system which governs Cohasset's police and fire departments. Assessment centers are a full day, in-person, skill-focused program. They require a candidate to address a series of scenarios overseen by a retired, a panel of retired professionals from that field. With the expectation that a candidate for a fire chief has already adapted firefighting and power medicine. The scenarios in a fire chief assessment center can include things like budget analysis, employee disciplinary matters, public presentations and leadership skills. Things that a fire chief would be expected to perform. Candidates go through experiences like drafting operations policies, analyzing an inbox of emails and working through live exercises where assessors assume roles like a problem employee or members of the public committee. Candidates are anonymous and individually scored. And assessors are screened to ensure that they have not had prior personal or professional relationships with the candidates. Assessment centers are a well-recognized, commonly used tool in the public safety world, which take the politics and personalities out of the process. In fact, the Cohasset Fire Department used an assessment center when filling the assistant chief's position 10 years ago. With a candidate who finished first, being automatically selected by the chief. The fire chief position was advertised in late November. Resumes are reviewed and screening interviews promising candidates conducted on Zoom in late December. Candidates were then selected for an assessment center, which took place in Cohasset on January 14th. The assessor panel was led by a distinguished former fire chief and included retired public safety chiefs representing both fire and police. At the end of the day, one candidate stood out from the rest, impressing both the assessors and town staff, myself included, that observed the interactive processes, the exercises and the written submissions. The candidate who led that pack out of the assessment center was then put through a series of background checks, reference checks and a panel interview with town departments. I also met with the candidate for several hours touring the town and discussing candidate's career, personal life and family over lunch. I wanted to be sure that any candidate I presented was as fully vetted as could be. And would meet the understandably high expectations, which have been established by the select board at the beginning of the search process. As the process reached conclusion, I reached out to the class of firing to bring them into the process. With plans to set up a meeting of phone calls with a candidate whose name I did not disclose. I looked forward to getting a good conversation started, allaying any concerns members might have before I finally formally, I should say, brought a candidate before the select. Unfortunately, either my call or follow-up email was ever returned. My efforts to engage the union were met with absolute silence. Cohasset is a small town, and while I have never discussed candidates in public, rumors began anywhere. These exchanges began to build and focus even as I was completing the candidate review process. What quickly developed was an outpouring from many in the classic community, responses from the heart, from personal experience, from day-to-day life. I want to acknowledge these responses and appreciate the positive sentiments that have expressed them. They matter and they do mean something. Tonight, many of you are learning about the full extent of the fire chief selection process for the very first time and how much time and effort has been devoted to it. As I acknowledge the passion I have seen in the community, my mission was to complete a publicly established process to find the fire chief. I am confident that I have completed that charge thoroughly, professionally and in good faith. Unfortunately, however, we now seem to be in two different places. So where do we go from here? First, much like Carrie stated earlier, I believe that everyone needs to take a deep breath and let their passions cool. Everyone has been hurt. Second, if the current process is not going forward, I need to ask the select board how to proceed. Does community experience need to be more of a factor? How much weight should be assigned? How much weight should the qualifications established last fall be assigned? Once established, I will work with staff to set up a fair weight with value to standards. I can then move forward with the process that will allow me to recommend a candidate. I'm prepared to move forward with the board's direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Okay. Chris has given us the questions I think we need to consider tonight in terms of how to move forward, how to best move forward. How is the board feeling? I've already said most of my piece, Chris has given his piece. We obviously have to figure out a way to move forward tonight. So I'm curious to hear what we're feeling as a board. Corey and then Diane.
Yeah, I was, I was, you know, I've done a lot of reading, a lot of researching and a lot of reading of the, especially the town manager act. And one thing that I think it's important to, to really realize is, is how this act was written in a very intentional way. And it says that the town manager has the authority or it is his job to appoint a bunch of different positions, including the fire chief. And this is a very specific decision that, that I believe was made by our previous town council when drafting this. And I thought to myself, why is this? And why is it important that we have this division, you know, the select board appoints the town manager, but why is it important that the town manager appoints other people? And it occurred to me that it would actually be very ethically worrying if this board was able to hire their friend or somebody that they knew or somebody, this board shouldn't be giving out favors. So I do believe that the way this law is written is designed to give the town the most objective outcome possible. And what I like about where we can go from here is that we have the ability to get a good decision that is very well reasoned. We can now discuss the qualifications and how to weight the importance of different things going forward, knowing that whoever is chosen has gone through this very independent process. So I do want to put it out there to understand that the law gives us the right path here. And I think that we have the ability to do this properly and that while it may have seemed stressful or complicated, it's really an important check. That way the people that are the elected officials, we can't do favors for people. It's really important that we have the separation. That's what I have to say.
No, well said, Corey. And obviously we want this process to be as fair and as objective as possible, considering all of these various things that we're all discussing. Diane and then Jean.
Thanks, Corey. I agree with what you said, and I'm glad I don't have to take up the, the governance role tonight. You know, I do have a question in general about, I mean, this, this meeting, the, the turn of this meeting, the outcome of the process and where this meeting is tonight compared to what was anticipated, I think, when I got my agenda last week is, is very different. And I don't know that I have the answers that Chris is asking about what comes next in terms of the process. I think it is important for us to sort of take a deep breath and pause. And I think I would, you know, I don't want to delay this very important process, but, or the outcome for this process, but, but I don't know that tonight we, we're going to be able to craft wherever that, that next step might take us. I, I wish the outcome were different because we have a, a public servant who's being forced to retire and has very big shoes to fill. And this should all be feel-good in my mind. Because we do have such a strong community. We've had a tremendous leadership in the fire department for many years and I, I wish this were a little more of a positive time. So I think that's one reason to take, take a deep breath. I do also want to say that, you know, hiring and then ultimately the, the the execution of the role of, for, for which you're hiring is, is an art as much as a science. And I think that while we were very focused on, on a clean process in terms of review and assessment. I think that, you know, one thing we probably should talk about a little more and direct Chris that, who has the hiring authority to consider a little, a little more is, is the art, is the art of actually being in a culture in whatever workspace that is, whether it's a small finance department or a large fire department. So I would just ask that we consider that, that sort of the culture that a new chief would be walking into and, and concerning sort of those, those art pieces in addition to the science of, of, of an objective valuation. So thank you.
You're absolutely right about the art and science. I really love that example. Jean.
So I want to thank everyone for all of your emails and input. I've met some of the individuals who've been finalists in this process as well. And I appreciate their time as well as input from town officials as well. I also appreciate the input from the firefighters who have reached out to us as well. I do think that community policing and law enforcement is a two-way street. We expect that the community law enforcement will be responsive to the community's needs. And I think it's important that we listen to those who work for us as well in order to build the trust in terms of it being a two-way street with public safety in our community. So that really informs my views here. Specifically in terms of a process moving forward. It's important that we hire a fire chief and I want to make sure that we do so promptly and diligently in an expeditious way. I don't think it's good for Cohasset to have an interim chief. We already have a fire department that we know is down some staff. We have more people now sort of arising from the pandemic, things are becoming more active. We know that we have greater demands in Cohasset. And so it's really important to me that we not linger on this decision and that we make one expeditiously, including for the safety of our community. In terms of more specifically process moving forward. I think that with respect to the current process, I appreciate Mr. Senior that you have done a very professional process and I thank you for that. And that you've elicited a lot of great information and options from that process as well. My suggestion to the board is to the extent that we want to add additional input that would inform our unique role in three positions in town. Fire chief, police chief and CFO. Those are our responsibilities to weigh in on and be the ultimate authority when it comes to approving these critical positions for our town. So we need to take an active role, including to reflect input from the community, in my opinion, and the will of the community to a certain extent. And so in light of that, I think that we do need to figure out a very specific way with respect to that art and science to really calibrate on what are we specifically talking about through this process? When we talk about what additional factors we need, I think we need to come to ground on that very quickly. And I think we need to move forward because I do think we have a lot of information before us. From my standpoint, I would like to see additional factors strongly weighted towards candidates that have a strong professional collaborative relationship with our staff and our town employees, with our residents, with our town boards and committees, including our planning board and other boards that the fire department regularly interacts with, with our neighboring communities such as Health, City, but Norwell, Hangum. Those communities that we engage with all the time for mutual aid and whose partnership is extremely important to us. With Soul Shore Hospital, who is a key partner of ours and we operate under their license. Having those strong relationships is important to me, as well as National Grid, which we know is a pain point for almost every resident in town. And so it's important that as whoever becomes our fire chief recognizes that and the very significant challenges that Cohasset faces, particularly given our unique situation as we have four towns feeding into Cohasset from different lines. And so to help guide the process, I wanted to come up with some additional factors that I think should be strongly weighted in this ultimate decision that the board has to make as the ultimate decider with respect to whatever Mr. Senior recommends. And we can, I think, discuss those factors if you want, and then move forward on a timeline, because like I said, it's very important to me that we make a decision and we make it promptly.
Thanks, Jean. And just to clarify on the timeline, and it's no secret, obviously that Chief Sylvia is, has his birthday coming up. I believe it's, is it end of April, Chris, that we have where the forced retirement happens in terms of the exact timeline for all intents and purposes. Okay.
I want to say it's April 22nd.
So we know the chief's birthday is coming. By the way, I wish we could just all change the mandatory retirement age for a little bit, maybe a couple more years. That would make all of our lives easier, but we can't do that. So I do agree with Jean that it would be nice to expedite this as much as possible, but considering what has been happening in town the past couple of weeks, it is really important too, that we take a breath tonight and figure out how to move forward and how to do it ethically and objectively in, in the best interest of the town. Jack?
Yeah, thank you, Carrie. And thank you for all the people across the town in unprecedented numbers who have given us, all of us on the select board, a lot of information we didn't have before, a lot of perspectives. I kind of feel like I'm in Alice in Wonderland. Are we talking about the same situation here? This is pretty clear. We have a situation in which the town manager appoints and we ratify. Now, this is on a couple of key positions. On other positions, we as a select board make the appointment. And we are empowered to do that. And yes, you know, you could say we're doing favors. And I will tell you quite honestly, doing favors is not something that's foreign to the Cohasset governing experience, which I think we could address some other time. However, the, 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 the select board does need to take a leadership position. And we do have the authority and most of the things, boards and commissions, we do the appointing. We appoint, for example, the director of emergency management direct, right? Now that got merged into, the people should know, got merged into the job description that was put on the Master Municipal Association posting, even though that's not an appointment of the town manager. And this board requested a legal opinion about that some six weeks ago, which we have yet to yet, yet to hear. And I have reminded that. So, and I'm not quite sure how the town manager, which is in the job description that was sent out to the fire chief, how that works in there, but we'll, we'll let that figure out. I do think that what has happened, and we, we all know this, we're just pretending that we don't, you know, there's nobody behind the, the curtain. But we all know what happened is an appointment was made and everybody in town knows who it was. It was widely disseminated. It wasn't some quiet thing that we can't talk about because of the, the open meeting law, whatever. Everybody in town knew about it. It was openly promoted. People were, you know, Chris talked to me about his appointment, asked me to meet with him, asked me to lobby with him, which I did. And not lobby with him, but Chris lobbied for him. So we all know that. And the response, right? Was, was, was absolutely completely overwhelming. And you know, we as select board members, we are elected because we are accountable. And we need to be accountable. We need to listen. And I can assure you that across, across this wonderful little town right now, they're our size of, I can't believe this. So, you know, I do think So, you know, I do think that this process has evolved into a travesty. And I believe that people who arguably, I'm Carolyn, I'm trying to be very judicious. Arguably are far and away the best person for reasons we don't know. Aren't being fully considered. I don't know how that came to, and I make no accusations about that, but it is concerning. And I do think that this board needs to move forward. We need to get a new fire chief in here and there's just been, you know, I don't want to live in Alice in Wonderland. And we have neatly danced around why we're here and everybody knew what was supposed to be on the agenda. And what was posted on the agenda to consider the appointment. Of the fire chief that was the recommendation of the town manager. And suddenly we're told, oh, that's not what this is all about, or we can't discuss anything because we'd be violating the open meeting law. And again, it gets curioser and curiouser here in Alice in Wonderland. Thank you.
Oh, I want to come back to the question at hand, which is how do we move forward? What do we do in the next week, two weeks, next month to ratify this situation? We're obviously all here tonight trying to remedy this and fix the situation. And I think we need to give Chris some clear direction here as to how to move forward and expedite this process. Corey and then Jean and then Diane.
Yeah, I just realized that I was talking about kind of the governance and the process and I do. I want to echo what, you know, Jean said about thanking Chris for running really, you know, a professional process. As far as how to wait stuff, I would say, I think I agree with like local knowledge and local, you know, contacts. But I'd also add into that, the, you know, I, very important now, especially with what's going on. Conflict resolution, especially among employees, you know, among managing staff, having someone that excels in. You know, making sure that everyone in the building is, is getting along. That's something that's also, I just personally, I found, find that to be very important. So in addition to the, to local knowledge, that would be something that I would prefer to have waited fairly highly if, if that's something that's on the, the radar.
Yeah. And again, just basic understanding of our community, right? Like this is not always an average community. And I mean that as a compliment, people are really engaged in this town. And people really want, you know, fire chiefs and police chiefs that they can talk to and have a relationship with. And that is an active member of the community. Jean.
Um, yeah, I would suggest that it would help to lay out the factors. You know, I put forward mine in terms of essentially the local factor, local fit, knowledge, experience qualifications. With all the subparts that I listed, you know, Corey added in his conflict resolution. And I think it would help to have a timeline too, because I'm, I'm, you know. Mindful that we're coming up on town meeting, and so I would like to try to move towards this within March. I think absolutely that no later than that. And, you know, I, I know that puts a crunch on things, but I do think that. You know, we, we, we need to timely expedite this as much as possible. I think too that. And, you know, may, maybe we want to give some guidance on the weights of the other factors in terms of the assessment center. As well as education, which I know is an issue that has come up from my perspective. When we're talking about factors and giving Chris direction on the appointment, which I know is what he requested. For me, education is a desired qualification, but it is. Not a make or break, certainly to the extent that someone has been put into the process. Then they have the requisite educational factor from my perspective.
In terms of experience too, I think sometimes experience can come.
I would expect to find those baseline qualifications of experience and education if they're in the finalists categories.
Okay, well said. Diane.
I just, I think I just want to give some clarity to my art, science thing. And, and I think it's been, you know, been addressed by my colleagues, which is, I do think, again. It's one thing to look at somebody on paper and find what might fit the qualifications best. But I think ultimately it's who's going to be able to walk in to a job that first day. And understand and manage the culture and have the kind of relationships that matter. So leaving it there. You know, I think honestly, I, it wasn't until this morning that I realized. That this, that an appointment was not going to be made tonight and I frankly. Spent my weekend, you know, deliberating over what I was going to do should a candidate be proposed to us. So. I feel a little unprepared, except I do think the most, I do think this art, the relationships, the running of, of a. That ecosystem that is the fire department, or whether it's like I said, the finance department is really, really critical. I, I think that a lot of the comments that have been received by us. Obviously, you know, it's, it's wonderful when people are engaged in, in, in the business of the town and are advocating. For somebody they, they, they like and respect, et cetera. But I, I do think we need to. You know, sift through that and, and make decisions based on what's needed in the Cohasset Fire Department for the future. So again, I don't want to delay anything, but I, I do think, you know, maybe Chris could come back to us with sort of a next step. Does it mean another round of interviews? Does it mean expanding? You know, I, I, I just, I just don't know that right now, but I do think that, you know, a lot of weight does need to be put on culture and fit. And, and in our particular department, our particular fire department, I also want to say the education piece. You know, I do a lot of hiring and it's, it, it is something that is less important to me frankly. Than experience and, and the ability to, to manage people and conflict resolution or, or whatever you want to call it. Here goes the select cat up my back. The challenges that, that anybody faces in a management position. So.
No, I think that's well said. And fortunately for us, we have many meetings in March. Where I think that we could have Chris come back to us with some more information here. I think we're doing a good job right now of determining the qualifications and talking through certain values and qualifications that we've all deliberated on. I'm also wondering, I think, Chris, from your perspective in terms of revisiting an assessment center or any type of assessment. Would it help you, hold on, Jack, I'm finishing my comment. Would it help you, Chris, to. Get answers from us over if we, we want to continue to do a different type of assessment or that assessment or what, I guess. In terms of what you need.
Yeah. So, so I, I really do appreciate everyone's engagement on this tonight. You know, this was, again, I don't want to go back to what I said, but you know, this was, we had a full public conversation October. And I'm always happy to take the, and, and I'm sorry we're here to. And that said. I, 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 it, what we've been doing is, is, is clear and, and it's, and it's the way, things are done. And, and to be clear, I just want to be clear, there's, this has done a paper trail process either. I don't think the, the people with the most degrees pick the most effective people. I don't. And, and I don't want anyone to walk away from this thinking that somehow there was a scorecard that said the more degrees you have, the more qualified you are. Because that's simply not true. And it's, it's disappointing when people who know better actually say things like that. And cast dispersions on processes where we have professionals doing a job that we've asked them to do. Totally detached. I had nothing to do with set the assessment. They're done all the time. In fact, several of the people were, were folks that Chief Sylvia thought super highly of. I mentioned his name. Because I sat alongside him for almost this entire process because of his experience, expertise. And, and, and at no time that I ever, you know. So, so I, I want to be clear, as I say, it's, it's important that, that someone fits the town. And I don't want to recommend a candidate that doesn't fit the town. And I hear, all right, I, I want to be clear. And, 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 and I think it's coming through clear that, that there needs to be a more of a weight on local connectivity. And again, I'm sorry, we didn't have those conversations and we didn't. And, you know, that said, I, I, you know, I want to move forward to make sure as expeditiously as select woman. I'm sorry. Tonight, sorry.
I know, we're trying to do last names tonight, but we're used to doing worse names.
And I, I want to do that because the town deserves to have somebody and, and, and I, I want to do expeditiously. And again, we also have to do it in a way that, you know, and again, I fully recognize the passion. I really do. And, and I, at the same time, you want to do it so that there's also some, some standards there. They're, they're, they're good for the person you hire, right? Because, you know, if you just hire someone, you know, that's all based on like, and if you don't like it tomorrow, then what you do, right? And it, you know, people, the world is fickle and I don't want to hire people just based on today. Because we want someone to be here for a while, right? I've been really lucky in class. We've, we've had two fire chiefs in 28 years.
Yeah.
This year I've become, I've become the longest-serving town manager in class history. And it's not so much because I've done such a great job, but I've done a pretty good one. Because I've had some people before me have, I've had some, some challenges. Now, now, again, I want to thank everybody for their process tonight and for their input. And I really want to come back to all of you with something that, that I think fits. And if you want to share stuff, I mean, I would really appreciate, you know, if you want to send me some things. That might tailor some of your thoughts instead of Tracy, put them together and I promise I'll turn something around quickly. And I don't think that we necessarily have to need to, I don't want to have to go through the whole full-blown search. I, I don't think that's necessary. That said, I do want to have a process that everyone will be comfortable with. It's actually a process, right? And that we can say, hey, we did this, we checked these boxes and we did these things, right? So, so I, I hear, I, I hear what we, where we're going. And again, I want to do the right thing by the board and, and the community and the fact that we're here. I, I, I can, Diane, I'm, I'm, my mind is, I, I, my head is spinning almost as much as yours. And I want to, I want to do everything I can to, to make this work for everybody. So thank you for the, the input.
Thanks, Chris. Okay. So Jack, Jean and Diane had hands up. I think we're almost done with this discussion. I feel like we were mostly agreeing on everything being said tonight. Jack.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. The, people have spoken very clearly. And they're very informed. And some of the things that we can derive from listening to them are. That number one, to have an organization of a town, a government organization, you have to reward. And incentivize those people who perform well. You also want to make sure that it's fair. And if you are exemplary. You'll be rewarded. That is a very clear and classic principle of managing. Any organization, especially a town organization. So the people in, in our town. Have sold, have sent all of us just to the thing sent to the select board, never mind social media. Very clear standards, all right? You also want to have integrity. And as far as education. Yep. I'm a big believer in education, although in my world, and I'm fairly well-respected and some fairly high levels. I have minimal formal education, but when I needed to find something, I went out and I got it. When I needed my security licenses, I went out and I studied and I got it. And I'm pretty good at it. And there's a lot of people, a lot of the big tech are people. Who were able to just say, I'm going to get it done and learn how. So that's an important part of the thing. Additional education, like going out and doing the specialized courses is also something that I have learned. By listening to the input from people in Cohasset is also important. So that needs to be part of it. So I think we do, you know, need to do that. But I think, and, and I, and I understand Diane's wants to get it done. And I think that, you know, Diane, you're right, we need to get this done. And I think this, we can get this done and let's not, you know, wait around. Let's figure out what these processes are and. You know, I'm going to kind of bite my tongue a little bit. I'm trying to be very patient on this. Fortunately, I think we have dispensed once and for all the idea of, of taking the select board appointment of the emergency management. Out of the fire department. Chief qualifications and, and, and Caroline, I know you know how to do that, so I assume that will be done. I mean, it's just in accordance with the law. So we'll hire a fire chief. And, and Chris, you, you've clearly. Come to some conclusions about how this needs to be, the selection needs to be revamped. And I, you know, applaud you for that. And, and I encourage you and I'd be glad to work with you to move that. You know, forward so we can get that done. And I don't think it's going to take more than a week or two weeks to get that done. But anyway, let's say, you know, I just encourage my fellow board members that we move forward. And we heal this rift in our community and get a new fire chief. Thank you.
All right, Jean.
Um, so Chris, you said something actually that did remind me of another factor that I think we should consider. And it goes to your long-serving tenure as well as yours, Diane. That commitment matters. And I think that that's another factor that we need to consider. Because I do think that experience has shown that those who are long-serving within our community tend to be successful. And, you know, we want to make sure that whoever is our fire chief or chief law enforcement personnel are successful. And Jackie reminded me of something as well, where I don't think it should be a determining factor. But I think the concept of promotion within is a very important one as well. Within our town governance system. It's important within our law enforcement and public safety officials as well, who we know. Really. It's a motivating factor. It reduces attrition. And it gives our employees hope that if they do a good job, that they can advance within our town. I think that's a message we need to weigh carefully. Again, not a determinant. And people do need to do the work and do a good job, but I wanted to put that out there. And so to sort of sum everything up, I've been, I've been trying to take notes. And in terms of, it sounds like the board's. Consensus maybe, for lack of a better term, is that we do want to wait within the factors to be considered. Local knowledge, including with respect to qualifications, experience, relationship, as I previously detailed. Conflict resolution and understanding of our community and management culture. Running the ecosystem and the culture as well, commitment. Promotion within where appropriate. And then in terms of maybe lesser weight within the factors, it sounds like. Educational qualifications are not necessarily something that are going to be very heavily weighted. And that we will, and, and I would suggest in terms of giving Chris guidance moving forward, I would, I would suggest that with respect to the assessment center. I know for me personally, if I had to get a job based on how I clean all my inbox, I'd be in trouble. But in any event, I think the assessment center should be weighted, but it should not be. The weight should not be higher than all of the previous factors that I alluded to. And so I would suggest that if the board is so inclined that we direct our town manager to move forward. Keeping in mind those factors and their varying weights to come back to us next week. With a proposal for how he wants to move forward and then implement it the following week. If there's any questions, we can go back and forth with the intent then to have a recommendation the last week of March. And I don't think we need to do another assessment center or another posting or another. Set of interviews unless, unless, you know, you disagree, Mr. Senior. But I'm not sure that there's, you know, more to be gained through that.
No, I, I think we've, I think we've exhausted that option. As that said, I, I, you know, I, I do want to move expeditiously. Sorry, sorry. There. I, I, I don't want to set false expectations or, or make this a rush job either, right? We're preparing for town meeting. There's a lot of other work going on right now. My director is retired, so we're a little, we're a little short-staffed. I want to do this expeditiously and I want to do it professionally. So I will do everything I can to do, put something together that's professional. And that's, and that, and that checks the boxes. And I think that you'd want me to do that first. So I will do everything I can to expeditiously. At the same time, I also want to make sure I give you a product that you'll be comfortable with. Right? I, I, I wait those factors, right? So something that's, that's, that's done. So something that's that's uh, that's done expeditiously with quality.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Jean. I think you summed up really well what all the qualities that we've been talking about with each other and, you know, it tonight, I think you you summed it up perfectly. So I think we need to leave this as anyone who has further things they want to say to Chris here on the board in terms of qualifications, other more in depth things that you're interested in or that we haven't talked about tonight, please reach out to Chris. Talk to him. I want to be respectful of the other things on our agenda tonight. So I think that we've reached a consensus on this issue and how to move forward in the best interest of the town.
Yeah, do we need a a motion to move forward on Jean's suggestions or?
I don't think so.
We have a consensus.
I think it's a consensus. I don't think it needs to be a motion because we're not really voting on anything. So I think it's a valid consensus, Chris, as long as you feel like you have your marching orders.
I I I think I do, and I'll step back with Tracy too and to make sure that I
Right.
Anything. And again, please, I I encourage you, uh, five, to please send me, you know, anything that any of your thoughts, if you could crystallize them in kind of writing, which helped me. Uh, send them to Tracy and uh, and then we'll put them together. So thank you all. I appreciate your thoughts.
Wonderful. Okay.
Madam, madam chair, could I just ask one follow up question? Thank you. Um, I I just want to follow up on on something that Mr. Creighton raised. And that was um, a request for legal opinion with respect to the emergency management services, you know, being rolled into the fire chief. I got some conflicting information as to whether or not a an opinion was requested or was necessary. And and then I think I heard Mr. Creighton then say that it was then that the emergency services component was then removed from the job description. So I have been standing down under the assumption that an opinion was not necessary. If if an opinion is necessary, I I am happy to render it. I just, I need some direction from the board as to whether or not that is still an issue that needs to be looked at or whether it has been otherwise resolved.
Jack, do you have your hand up? You're muted, Jack.
I'm sorry. Caroline, I'd be glad to clarify that. Um, it was in the original Mass Municipal Association job description. The job description was fire chief and emergency director. We discussed it at the board meeting. Um, it's clear that one fire chief is a town manager appointment um, subject to ratification um, or approval of the select board. Emergency management is a distinct, that's a distinct position and that is appointed by the select board. Um, it was brought up and then there was some question as to, um, my question, my concern was that if you hire somebody with an erroneous um, job description and they get hired, they say, well, this is what I was hired to do. So that was the clarification. Uh, I thought that it was going to be removed from the job description. I checked it a couple of weeks later, it was still there. So I I think if if it is in fact not on the table, I don't see we have to have any further information. But it had been kind of one of those legal issues that have been lingering for about six weeks. So um, if if Chris, you know, asserts that it's no longer in the job description, it's a moot point.
Uh, Cory?
I was just going to say, I mean, um, this is a little separate discussion of what we're having. If you want to have an in-depth discussion about the emergency management position and answers, we should do that. We should put it on agenda and have a discussion.
No, this is not, yeah.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Isn't what we're discussing. I was just responding to her.
Yeah, no, and Carolyn, I appreciate you bringing the point up. We will figure out if we need you to render that opinion. I don't want to put you on the spot now, but we will, if we have
No, no, that's fine. I I just wanted to make sure that if you needed information from me and it sounded like you were waiting for something. And as I said, I I thought I was told that
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I think it's
Otherwise. I didn't think we needed you yet for that because I do think it's a moot point right now. But if we do put it on an agenda, I would love to have you come back and give that opinion, if that's okay. Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Moving on. I, I know we have public comment on here next. We need to move on to our Barnes Field vote after that. But any member of the public right now who would like to ask a question or make a comment, you can raise your hand here. And I will promote you into the meeting. You must provide your full name and address for public record. With remembering though, that we can't be using any names of possible future hires or current employees. We're trying to do this legally and as professionally as possible. So if there is any public comment, I don't want the public to feel like we're not trying to listen. We are looking for hands. All right, I don't see any hands right now. If a future question comes up, you can raise your hand. Moving on to our next agenda item. This is a review of the rules and regulations that we discussed at our last meeting about the Barnes Field complex. Everyone in their email should have an updated version of the rules and regulations from Michelle. Has everyone seen that or can people pull it up right now? If you haven't been able to glance at it, well, I know we said at our last meeting after this vote that we would review what we discussed and then in the interest of transparency, you know, vote on it again after reviewing it. So are there any comments about this? Hi, Michelle. Thank you for getting this all typed up. I know this has been a another issue that's been very, a very hot button issue in town, as we all know. Comments from the board, problems, any typos you see? If not, we can move forward with a a motion unless there's any other discussion.
Can we, um, is it possible just to share the the rules and regs? So we just have them in the
Sure, Michelle.
Yep, I can share them.
You have sharing capability that you should.
I don't.
Hold on.
Okay.
Hmm, why is that? Um, hold on. Okay, now try.
Okay. Yep. There we go.
And Diane, I see your hand. Alright. There we go.
Can everyone see them?
Yep. So for everyone watching, these are what we discussed as a board at our last meeting to officially vote on them.
So I do want to make one comment, um, something that wasn't voted on but was asked for um, by one of the neighbors was number two. Um, I did send it over to CYB SA and asked them if there was any problems with adding this. They had no problems, so we just included this in the rules and regulations.
Okay. Diane and then Cory.
Um, one is very minor under number two. It says annually by March fifteenth, tenant shall will notify the neighborhood. So it should be either shall or will.
It's already out on this copy she has on here.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just looking at my
Diane, I love your your proofreading abilities are always fantastic.
Yep, there you go. Um, and then the, this is just sort of the layout. It's not a big deal, but um, number one is the is the, you know, the the allowance for the installation of the lights. And then all the light specifics are under number seven. So I don't know whether we go from one and then move up the lighting stuff or put one down as number six. It's it's just a formatting thing. I don't think it's that big of a deal. Um, the other thing that we talked about last week was that, you know, this, this could, this is something that um, we can update as needed. Um, I think one of the, one of the items, I don't want to hold this up after by holding up things last week. But um, one of the things we didn't discuss was signage. Um, and and typically it's not allowed on town property. So I think we should just address that in the future, that, you know, that there would be allowances for that. Um, I just think it's something that should be codified. Where we got into this situation and it's taken a year to deal with it because nothing was written down. And I I I say this literally to both um, um, you know, protect the interests of CYB SA and their investments on the field as well, as well as the community. So I I would like to have a discussion about signs at some point, but I'm I'm fine with this tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Cory.
Yeah, I I think Diane makes a good point. I mean, you know, signage and fundraising is just so vital to to all these institutions that we want to be sure that it's that it's, you know, as Diane said, codified that way. I mean, that's just such an important revenue stream. Um, the only, and this this lines up with with my notes and and the review of the meeting. Uh, the one thing that got dropped was the idea of uh, everything must be, you know, uh, must meet permitting guidelines. But that, I think in the meeting, we we, if I recall correctly, we decided that was a little bit duplicitous. Is that, Michelle, do you remember? Is that why that got struck? Okay.
Yeah, so that's already included in the body of the the lease itself.
Yep. Okay, I mean, yeah, this this lines up with with, um, you know, as I understand what we had agreed on last um, last week.
Okay. Can you just scroll down real quick, Michelle? I'm just checking one other part. Okay. All right, any other, Cory, is that, is your hand still up? All right. Any other comments or corrections you see needed? If not, we can entertain a motion.
I would move to um, approve or to ratify the rule, the prior rules and regulations that we voted on at the last select board meeting as at fourth and exhibit C to the lease we're looking at.
Okay, is there a second?
I just i- if, uh, well, I guess in a second, so.
Well.
Oh, second, I'm sorry.
Okay, Jack's, okay, a further discussion, Cory?
I was just going to make it cleaner and just say move to approve the the lease with the rules and regulations as presented to tonight.
I would second that amendment unless Carolyn thinks we need to phrase it as a ratification. That's all.
All right, so we have a Cory has now a motion, Jean second in Cory's motion. Carolyn, tell us if we're doing the right thing legally.
I I I think you could phrase it either way, to be honest with you. If you are going to move to approve the lease with the rules and regulations as presented, I think that takes the, has the same effect as a ratification.
Okay. All right, so it sounds like we can move forward on this vote then, if everyone's
Roll call the amendment and then roll call the vote, yeah.
Okay. All right, the first vote will be on the amendment with a roll call vote, starting with Jack.
Jack, great, nine.
Corey Evans, I.
You nearly dippled up.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Okay, back to the original motion. Any further
I.
Oh, okay, yeah, for sure. Well, well, if no one has any other discussion, great.
Corey Evans, I.
Jeanne Hilly dippled up.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Okay, Michelle, thank you so much. This has been a lot of work on your part. We really appreciate all of your help here.
Thanks, Michelle.
All right, moving on to our public hearing for our licenses, permits and hearings. And Carolyn, thank you so much too for being here.
Thank you, folks. Have a good rest of your meeting.
Presence is appreciated. We're lucky to have you as our counsel.
Well, Caroline, you can hang around.
Carolyn, it's Carolyn, not Caroline.
You've got it from here. I have full faith. Have a good evening, folks.
Thank you. So we, we have our continued hearing that has been continued a couple of times with Split Rock Social um, for the wine and malt license for twelve parking way. The hearing is still open. I, did, was everyone able to see the email that attorney Jim Lampke sent out? Or does anyone have any questions from Jim? I know he's available over text or phone if we need him, but
The only, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Cory, yeah.
Yeah, so I um, I do understand the applicant has a pending um, uh, victory license and entertainment license. Um, those didn't make it, as I understand it, those didn't make it onto this agenda because of like the storm and stuff. So um, tonight, as I understand it, we are just going to talk about the alcohol. And then uh, you know, the victory license we've done before fairly easily, it shouldn't be really any sort of an issue. Um, and then the entertainment license, we can be briefed on uh, for the next meeting as well. Is that, is that, do I understand?
So we, we just weren't able to get the the other one on the agenda because of the storm and
I understand.
We can do that at our next meeting next week, but tonight we can approve the wine and malt one. Hi, Erin, thank you for being here. Oh, and Jim, you're here too.
The only, the only, I mean, we we'd had that discussion a few weeks ago. I think we were pretty, pretty clear about all the stuff. The only thing that we should clarify in, uh, to me would just be hours of operation. I know we talked about it, but I just, I lost it in my notes about um, what hours of operation we want to have on this.
Yeah, so Erin.
Yes.
That's your cue.
So we will be open um, Wednesday through Sunday. Um, the hours Wednesday through Saturday will be twelve to nine and then Sunday will be twelve to five.
Okay. Okay. Any questions on that? Diane?
Again, just clarification on what we're discussing tonight, just the um, the the wine and malt
That's the wine and malt, yes.
Okay.
Correct. We we weren't able to get the other one on the agenda in time, so sorry about that, but we can do that next week. Cory?
Erin, just, sorry, go ahead, Dan.
No, just, just one more question, and and I don't know if it's appropriate, but just in terms of our discussion on the entertainment license. Um, Chris and Jim, I I think I would, you know, when we discuss that at at the next meeting, it would be good to know what the entertainment licenses are for other other, the restaurants in the village. Um, because I know we've been somewhat restrictive in terms of outdoor um, music. And this clearly would be something that would be outdoors. So I just want to make sure we know what Lenny's is doing and 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 the ore and and beers and everything else. So we can take that into consideration. So that's all.
Good point. And in terms of outdoor dining too, I don't know if we're going to need to revisit that in the near future, just for all of our village restaurants as well. Cory and then Jack.
Already had one, Jack, I'll defer to you for this round.
Oh, thank you, Cory.
Um, sorry, before, before you go, Carrie, I know Ryan is also on.
Oh.
Possible to promote him as well.
Yep.
Sorry, Jack.
No, that's okay. No, I
Viewership tonight, it's hard to see some of the names in the wings here.
Yeah, my head is cut off, but you know. Um, uh, no, I'm, no, no bad jokes. But anyway, I I I think I echo what Diane's comment, which is with the number of um, you know, basically bars and entertainment. So we're just going to have to sooner or later address um, how late the hours are going to go and the whole music and entertainment and noise and all that. I think we're just going to have to sit down sometime and and put together a good policy. It's consistent. Everybody needs to know what the rules are and the rules have to be the same for everybody.
Okay. Cory?
Yeah, I was just, uh, Erin, I was going to just clarify on the hours. Um, you gave us some hours for, and Jim, while you're here, let me just, let me bounce this off you. It would seem cleaner for us to, because the liquor license will have very strict, you know, these are, you know, licensed times. You can obviously operate within those times however you want to. But if we say five o'clock, then you wouldn't be able to serve until six. It occurs to me that, you know, maybe for the purposes of, you know, if our residents like this and really want to be here, um, maybe it would make more sense for us to to do within the hours of like twelve to nine, uh, you know, every day. Um, and that that way it gives you a little bit of flexibility throughout the week. Um, just but
It's a decent point. Do we even want that though, Erin?
Um, like the stipulation on the time?
Yeah, so you can have whatever hours, but if we, if we put your hours as they are now, you wouldn't be able to change them, expand them. And uh, so we don't want to make this more complicated for you. We obviously want your business to succeed. We're very excited about downtown Cohasset really being, having a great summer here. So uh, if we used to say twelve to nine every day, that gives you ability to, you cannot, you can't go past nine without coming back to us. But if you want to close at five, you could absolutely do that, you, you know, just give you flexibility.
Are you referring to just the entertainment policy going?
The alcohol policy.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I mean, that, that, I don't see that posing a problem, Ryan, do you?
No, I think that's actually a really good idea. In fact, I was thinking about holiday weekends as well, when, you know, you have a Monday for Labor Day or Memorial Day. It's good to have that flexibility to be able to open on a Monday if need be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks Cory.
That's my question. I'm prepared for a motion when the board is done.
Alright Diane and then Jack. Oh, no, okay, Jack.
Yeah, I just want to check with Jim, on a liquor license, if you have set hours, aren't you supposed to be open all those set hours? I don't know how that plays out.
Yeah, technically, can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you Jim.
Okay, because sometimes my microphone doesn't work right. Technically, you know, it's a matter of public convenience and if a place has licensed for certain hours, they're supposed to be open those hours to serve the public convenience. That, that's been old school alcohol policy and law for a number of years in Massachusetts. But as a practical matter, you do see many places that have flexible hours. One of the problems with flexible hours is that the police department, for example, needs to know when a place is authorized to be open and when they are open, so that if they come by and they see the lights on during hours that they're not supposed to be open or vice versa, then, you know, they can check that out. As a matter of public safety for the, for the business as well as for the public.
Okay, Jack, do you have a follow up on that or I'll go to?
No, I just wanted to bring it up.
Jean.
Well, could we, in light of that, I would suggest we give the applicant the hours they originally requested, and if it's like a holiday weekend, you know, like a for the July or something, then they could get a one day liquor license to extend. Would that be possible?
No, no, but what you could, if, if a place is already has a liquor license, they can't.
They can't get to.
Eligible for the one day special licenses under section 14.
Oh, okay.
You can do, what you can do in your approval of the hours, you can specify on any Monday holidays, they can be, you know, open for, for whatever the hours are that, that, that you designate.
That's perfect.
That's a better way of, of dealing with it, so that you don't have to come back and then you deal with, well, you know, we're changing the, the date, just you know, it's Monday holidays.
Good point, Jim. Erin, that sounds good. Do you?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a great, you know, solution.
Okay. Alright, so are we prepared to make a motion based on that info?
So moved.
Do we need to clarify Cory?
Yeah, we have to, we have to read the motion.
I was letting Cory do it, Jack, hold on.
No, no, I, I, I just wanted to, I wish, we should ask if there's any public comment, because it is a public hearing.
I, yep. Looking for hands. Hold on. Amy Bernicker, I'm bringing you in to talk. Hi Amy. Oh, you're, there we go, hi.
Hi, you know, Amy Bernicker, 662 Jerusalem Road.
Thank you.
My comment isn't directly related to the hours, but this is, I feel is my only time to say something. And it's a simple thing. I'm very excited about the idea of the restaurant, the place, the venue. I think it's a great, it's great. However, I just wanted to say that I find your name Split Rock to be very insensitive to Cohasset, because there are many people in Cohasset who love the rock, the ledge here. And we're watching destruction of this ledge. I see it all around me on my street. Huge machines are just literally splitting the rocks and destroying the landscape and and we, you know, there are a lot of people who want to protect it. So I just wanted to point out that the name of your establishment is very offensive. And I, and I just offer, you know, my suggestion that you might consider adjusting your, your name. Otherwise, I wish you the best of luck, because I, I really want to be able to go to your establishment. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Just want to clarify, I, I always thought the name Split Rock had to do with oysters.
It does.
Okay, no, I just wanted to clarify my own opinion. Okay.
Well, no, it is, we are looking at rocks being split all over. It, it, maybe it has to do with oysters, but it also brings up the.
The ledge is also a very important issue in town, Amy. You're not wrong about that.
Yes, so it, it's just, it seems to echo that. So, it's just, it's just a strange thing, that, those words. It's feel, makes me feel pain in my stomach just hearing it. So I just wanted you to know that and I'm not the only one. But otherwise, I hope, you know, I, I, I hope it all works out and that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for sharing. Are there any other members of the public who would like to comment? Please raise your hand now. I do not see anyone. Alright. Back to if we are prepared to make a motion.
I'm, I'm mostly prepared, but I've forgotten the hours after the discussion, so my apologies.
We're trying tonight, everyone, we're trying.
No, it's totally fine. And I, I actually misspoke the first time, so thank you for clarifying. A Wednesday through Saturday, 12 to nine, and then Sunday's 12 to six. I think I said 12 to five on Sunday, it's 12 to six.
Okay, and then I've got the data I need here and I will. I, I move to approve the application of Split Rock Social Inc., DBA Split Rock Social at 12 Parking Way for a seasonal on premise wine and malt beverages alcohol license and the appointment of Aaron Harmon as the manager with the hours of operation to be Wednesday through Saturday, 12 PM to 9 PM and Sunday, 12 PM to 6 PM.
Thank you Cory, do we have a second? Jean, are, are you trying to talk?
I, I think we wanted to amend the Sunday to be until 9 PM when Monday is a holiday. Was that the?
That is what Jim suggested, yes.
And, and also just being able to operate on, on Mondays, because the, the days of the week that she's suggesting not withstand what I said earlier about supposed to be open for public convenience, she was saying Wednesday through Sunday, Wednesday through Saturday. Plus, I think you want to include plus Monday holidays.
Okay, and then I add to the hours of operation to include until include Mondays, 12 to six on.
Or if it's, if it's no difference, I, I think your suggestion actually is the simplest. I, I don't know if that's something we could go back to is.
Well, so, I, I mean, I think what, what Attorney Lampke was saying is that typically it's not, it, I was a little bit missing, I was misunderstanding the law because we went through this with a, with.
Okay.
However, if, you know, if, if this board could say, as I understand it, these are the hours, then you could inform the, the police department or something, there's nothing that prevents us from doing this. You know, this, you know, some boards may have issues with the idea that we've given you these hours and you're not using them, but if that's the understanding here, you know, we may be able to, to figure out a better way to do this, but I defer to my other board members on that.
I think for the sorry.
Go ahead, yeah, no, go ahead.
I think it makes sense to grant hours that are actually gonna be used for other applicants as well as our public safety personnel that have to bear that in mind.
Okay.
Diane, I see you nodding, you agree with that too.
I agree. So basically what we're, we're the, what we're talking about is as she presented Wednesday through Sunday, 12 to nine, Sunday 12 to five, except and also a 12 to five on Monday holidays and Sundays leading into a holiday could be extended to nine.
Yes, I think you just said it perfectly.
Do we then need to define holidays? I'm just wondering if.
So, so forgive me, this is not easy. My question is, what are your, what are your hours, are you open throughout the year? I guess is my first question.
No, it's a seasonal business, so we're, we're shooting for April through October. We may, per, I believe the guidance from this board previously apply to extend through December for the holiday Christmas stroll. But, you know, that would be abbreviated hours at that point and we can take that up later. But yeah, April through October.
The, the reason I asked was obviously there's only a few holidays within.
Right.
You know. We could say that, but if, if, if you're going from April to potentially December, I think we just leave it as Monday holidays. You know, 12 to five and Sundays 12 to nine and as they advance before a holiday. And I don't think we need to define holidays.
I agree, I agree. Cory.
So that's fine. I just, I also wonder, Mr. Lampke, is there a way that we can grant the license and then the applicant can, you know, let the ABCC know that their operating hours will be less? I mean, is there, is there a different mechanism to, to get this done that's a little cleaner?
When, when you send the forms into the ABCC, you have to specify the hours that have been approved. You know, I'm, I'm not sure that they would, would kick it back because there were days that the hours weren't specified. So, what do you, what is it just suggesting that to notify the ABCC on?
I, I'm just saying if we can approve a certain range, but then they can notify, you know, the police department and the ABC, somebody about their change in operating hours, just to, to save the re, the reapplication and, I mean, to save some, with some paperwork here.
Yeah, well, you know, the, the board can change, and I just had this issue come up and communicated with the ABCC today. As a matter of fact, to confirm it, that you as the local licensing authority can change the hours of any liquor licensee within the time periods that you have the discretion to do so, and I'll explain that in a second. By having it before the board as a, as a, a hearing on your agenda. Doesn't have to be an advertised hearing, doesn't have to be a hearing with notice to the abuddies. Unless the board wants to do that, you always have that right. But this certain hours that you that the licensee has the authority to, to operate. And then there's certain hours that you have the ability to expand those hours, like from 11 PM to, to 1 AM, you, you can expand those.
Thank you, Attorney Lampke, thank you.
Alright Diane, I see your hand now. We're, we're almost, I think we're close.
Yeah, I, I'm hoping I'm gonna wrap this up. I, I mean, that, that's what we do with Red Lion Inn, like when they wanted the cave, so it, it's really up to the applicant whether they want this convoluted motion or whether we stick to your original hours. And then if you want to be open on a Monday or late on Sunday, you just type it up and bring it before the board.
What, what do you think Erin and Ryan? We're trying to do what's best for you, but I know this has gotten a little.
Well, I think from my understanding, it, it seemed like it was going down a fairly straightforward path. We just had our original hours and then, you know, with the caveat, whatever for the Monday holidays and the late hours on Sunday when that's applicable. So if we do that, I think that path of least resistance here and we just call it a day.
Which was the motion you were making Cory, I think.
That's correct. My apologies for taking us a rabbit hole. I fully own all of that. So I will, I will clarify my.
On Jean, do you have a more?
Yeah, I was, just for the sake of our clerk slash note ticker, Cory, would you mind withdrawing a motion, just starting afresh in terms of where you were gonna, I think maybe that's what you were about to do. And I was also gonna say, we might want to add in the terms and conditions, including of the permit and that which was set forth in the application packet. If you look at Attorney Lampke's email to us.
Yeah, you hadn't got down that far yet. Okay, yeah, because I was at the, at the line with the hours. So with the chair's permission, I will withdraw my motion and attempt to refile the said motion. Okay, so I move to approve the application of Split Rock Social Inc., doing business as Split Rock Social at 12 Parking Way for a seasonal on premise wine and malt beverages alcohol license and the appointment of Aaron Harmon as manager with the hours of operation to be Wednesday through Saturday, 12 to nine, Sundays 12 to six, including Monday holidays, 12 to six and extended hours on Sundays preceding the Monday holiday of 12 to nine. Okay, subject to the terms and conditions of the special Village Business District Special Permit approved by the Cross Planning Board. And subject to the terms and conditions set forth in an application packet, that's probably with entertainment, but that's fine.
Oh, okay, Jim.
What happened to, someone explain to me again what happened to the common victular license?
We, we weren't able to get it on the agenda in time because of the snowstorm and a couple other factors, so in terms of transparency for the town, we want to put that on the agenda for next week. So we're trying to get this one done, because this is the bigger hurdle. And we had this one on the agenda and this hearing has been continued a couple times. Alright. So Cory made the motion after a lot of hard work. We have a second from Jack. Any further discussion?
I just want to say, well done Cory.
Alright, roll call vote, Jack.
Motion to adjourn?
No, no.
Oh, Jack great night.
Corey Evans eye.
Jean Haley Dipple.
Diane Kennedy eye.
Carrie Thompson eye. Thank you Erin and Ryan. We're very much looking forward to seeing everything get opened.
Glad to see you there. Thank you.
Wonderful, okay. I do believe now we need to move to close that hearing.
I move to close the hearing.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call vote, Jack.
Jack great night.
Corey Evans eye.
Jean Haley Dipple.
Diane Kennedy eye.
Carrie Thompson eye. Alright. We also have Nine Depot Court would like to do a change of hours, I believe, for their common victular license and entertainment license. Who do we have joining us? Yeah, go ahead Jim.
I see Tracy Vaughn, who I believe is one of the operators.
Yep. Hi Tracy.
Hello. There we are.
Thanks for being here.
Oh, thank you. How's everyone doing tonight?
We are good. How are you?
We're great.
Alright, so.
Having us.
Oh no, our pleasure. So I know we've all seen this in the packet, but just for the sake of the audience hearing, tell us what you're asking.
So, my understanding from our attorney Lou Cassis is that there's a separate common victular license application required, which we submitted after the liquor license and original common victular license application. So we're looking for our, our tonal Cohasset Common Victular License. We applied, we also submitted a tonal Cohasset Entertainment License. I'm sorry, tonal Cohasset applica, license application for entertainment. We submitted a document to change our name from the ore to the blue ore.
Oh.
And lastly, we, our, our existing liquor license and common victular license stipulates the hours of 11 AM on Sunday. We're hoping to do brunch starting at 10 AM on Sunday.
Okay, Jim.
Yes, that, that's in, in order. Recent change, or change in the law a few years ago, places can open up at 10 o'clock now on Sundays. Although a lot of places still have the 11 o'clock opening on, on Sundays, so I, I did not see any problem with any of the requests.
Okay, I will say, we, we definitely need more brunch places around here, so I see, I think the 10 AM open would be smart and people would really appreciate that. Any questions for them Cory?
Uh, could you just expand a little bit on the recorded music inside and outside, or the outside portion, what you're thinking of doing?
I, I don't believe there'd be any outside music.
Okay.
That's, okay, that's in the app.
Live, I'm sorry, Cory.
Oh, no, it, it just says in the app, in the application, recorded music inside and outside.
So. Typical kind of, you know, Pandora music, music from Pandora.
Alright, so you're thinking of like a small speaker or big stereo? Just give us a little bit of a vision.
I got, I don't know exactly what's out there, but they are existing from the prior tenant along with the TV.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions? If not, we can make a motion.
I'm gonna try it. Can, can we, Jim, can we do all three at the same time and do I need to do one by one?
Uh, yes, I apologize for the memo getting out so late, but the, the memo has, uh, has all the.
Motion in there?
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll do it. Let me just open it up, sorry. So I moved to approve the application of Nine Depot Inc., DBA The Blue Or, Nine Depot Court for a common victular license, an entertainment license, the change of hours to start on. for a common victular license, an entertainment license, the change of hours to start on at ten AM on Sundays. The change of the name to the Blue Oar. Great, with the hours of operation to be, um.
Were they already set when you approved the license before?
Yes.
Yeah, we already set them.
Yes, as, as noted in the previous, um, approval, um, except for the change on Sundays. Um, and subject to any terms and conditions set forth in the application.
Great. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Jack?
Jack great night.
Corey Evans eye.
Jeanne Haley Dippleduck?
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. I, we cannot wait for you to open. Thank you for being here, both of you.
Thank you so much. Soon, very soon.
If you can see behind us, we're, we're sitting in the space right now and it's already cleaned and.
It actually has, I see.
Oh, light it up. It's a, the blue light behind you is very apropos to your new name change.
Need people to test the taps, let us know. We're happy to.
Exactly.
They put the beer system yesterday, so we're getting very close.
We'll, we'll actually come over right now after the meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, and then in, out of respect for Jim staying for a little bit longer, would everyone be okay if we move the bottom thing on here, the South Shore Eco Fest? Because that is a one-day liquor license, so is everyone okay with bringing that up and doing that next, just so Jim can leave after that?
Um, that's fine.
Yes, I don't see a problem with that. We had seven fifteen as the slot, so we're good.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. All right, so I know we had this presented to us before the South Shore Eco Fest. I'm not sure, is anyone joining us for this? Sarah, there you are. Sarah's coming in, so we mentioned this before, I believe in our past meeting. This is a one-day liquor license and entertainment license they are asking for. Hi, Sarah, thanks for coming.
Hi, thank you so much. I think, um, Matt Elder from Untold Brewing and Marissa Manley should also be, um, on here as well, if that's okay. And I appreciate you bumping us up. Thank you.
I'm trying to be respectful to everyone in the crowd, right? All right. Hi, Marissa, thanks for coming.
Hi, thanks for having us.
Marissa, you are muted. If you were saying something.
Who's coming, sorry?
Should be Matt Elder from Untold Brewing. He could be on there somewhere, he promised.
Yep.
He was there, so.
See, oh, hold on. There we are.
Awesome.
Hi, Matt, can you hear us?
Yes, hi.
All right, gang's all here. All right, so I know we mentioned this event briefly before, but just tell us again, Sarah, what you're trying to do.
So our plan with Eco Fest is to, um, promote sustainable, sustainable living really, and help support local sustainable businesses, organizations and nonprofits. Show everybody across the South Shore from facet, but wider feel like Kingham and Situ as well. Sustainability is, is easy, is fun, and, and that it's something we need to act on really urgently. So also just have a bit of a festival atmosphere where this isn't about being martyrs, this isn't about making you like wash religiously or you're recycling, it's about having fun and just seeing what simple swaps you can do. So we're really excited to have, we've got, I think, we're up to about twenty-five stalls that will be running from two till six PM. Um, as I say, local businesses selling and showing their services and, um, showing people how they can get involved in the local community. Untold will hopefully be, if you guys approve tonight, will be running a beer garden from three till nine. We're gonna have, and the entertainment license, um, is proposing that we have music from like four thirty, five o'clock, three till nine o'clock, which will be very similar to the music sound system that was set up for the holiday stroll. Um, and it's typically on the farmer's market, um, in the summer, like a simple tent, small sound system, um, where we'll have local schools with children performing, we'll have local live bands, um, we'll run contests. Eco Bingo, we'll have Gavin DuHunts and, uh, and local art contests for the schoolchildren to get involved in as well, so. Feedback we've had from businesses and, and people has been, has been really positive, so.
It's such a good idea and thanks for the positive energy around this, and it really does sound like it would be a very fun in, event for the town.
Hopefully, and hopefully I'll just encourage people out of their, their winter hibernation, cuz.
Yes.
A lot of snow right now and it's March, which.
Exactly, I know, I know. All right, Diane, I saw your hand first.
I'm sorry, um, I just have a question about the, um, whether this all went through the event committee, the staff event review committee and, um, cuz I don't, I don't see that in my packet, but.
Yes, it did, and so it has been approved at events committee, it was approved in events committee, offer meeting in November, and then it was actually approved in, um, I think the January meeting actually happened at the very end of January because of the changeover in the staff in the town hall. It was approved based on, um, it was improved in concept, um, ending the traffic and police, uh, plan that was approved by Chief Quigley, um, on the, uh, first of February, uh, let me get my dates right, I think he approved that on the fifteenth of February. He also approved the liquor plan that we submitted, which is similar to the one-day permit that Matt has submitted for Untold Brewing, cuz they will be in charge of all that, but you quickly approved that on the fifteenth of February as well. Um, and then we due to get him the operations plan by the, uh, eighth of March, so we're still.
Okay, great.
Chief Quigley's happy with everything.
Jim?
Uh, who, who from the organization is going to be the person, uh, primarily in, in charge? Cuz the license technically is supposed to be issued to a, a responsible individual of the organization. So, uh, who, who is that going to be?
Matt, do you wanna take that one?
Yeah, sure, yeah, um, I've, Matt Elder, uh, Cohasset resident, I, I, the founder of Untold Brewing. I, uh, submitted the, the one-day liquor license application for the beer garden.
Yeah, I assumed it would be Matt, just based on the fact that you are from Untold. We all love Untold, by the way.
Thank you very much.
And, and the, uh, two other, uh, other things, you have a date of April twenty-ninth, uh, did you wanna, uh, suggest to the board a rain date in case, uh, uh, there, there's rain that day?
Yes, please. I'm sorry to interrupt, yes, please, the, the following Friday, the, the May the sixth, I think, has been proposed, um, obviously as the rain day.
Okay, and, uh, you would indicated that your hours were three to nine, uh, but you also indicated that you're gonna be picking up the alcohol in the morning and bringing it to the site. Uh, I presume in, in the morning, so your hours technically under the one-day license, uh, any time that you're gonna have alcohol on the site, whether it's preparation, operation or close-up, uh, that has to be part of the approved hours by the board. So, uh, you may wanna have the license approved for the hours of, I don't know what time you expect to bring the alcohol there, but twelve, you know, say twelve o'clock and, and I don't know how long it's gonna take you to pack up at the end at nine o'clock, but you'd need to include those hours, uh, in the license technically.
Matt?
Yeah, I mean, it actually won't take us very long to clean, or to set up and especially clean up, but twelve, twelve to ten sounds perfect. That way we can get everything cold and ready to serve by the, the opening.
All right, that's a good clarification too, Jim.
Yeah, I, I, I just didn't want you to have a, you know, some inspector, state inspector comes and, uh, you have a problem that you were there before, you know, before your license was in effect for those hours, so.
Yeah, that was a good point. Any other issues on your end, Jim?
Uh, no, I don't believe so.
Okay, other questions from the board? If not, we can entertain a motion. Diane?
I, I, I do think you should call for public comment on this.
Oh.
Yes, having, having, having approved a motorized, um.
And, and by the way, this isn't a hard hearing, but I, anyone who wants to raise their hand at any time during the meeting, you're allowed to, if it, if your comment deals with what we're talking about, so I am always trying to watch for hands. I don't see any yet. All right. If there's no further comment, I think we're ready for a motion.
Um, I'm happy to make the motion.
Go for it.
And before I do so, Attorney Lampy, is it, um, appropriate to say with Matt Elder being the person responsible? Is that how it would be termed?
Yeah, that, that would be better. I should have put that in, uh, those motion. Matt Elder of South Shore, uh, Echo Fest.
Okay, so I move to approve the application of South Shore Echo Fest with Matt Elder being the person responsible for a one-day license for April twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two, with the rain date of May sixth, twenty-twenty-two, for the hours of twelve o'clock PM until ten o'clock PM, and subject to the terms and conditions set forth in its application packet.
Second. Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Jack great night.
Okay, good.
Corey Evans eye.
Jeanne Haley Dippleduck?
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Okay, we got the liquor one done. Do we need to do the entertainment one now?
Very much.
Do we need to do a separate motion for your entertainment one, I think?
We put it through as a separate, um, we did make a separate application, I filled in the one pager and, and submitted it, so.
Okay.
Are there any questions about that?
The only thing that was on the packet that I got was the, uh, one-day, uh, liquor license. Te- technically for the entertainment, you know, the, the town has a separate form for the entertainment.
We, we filled that in and we submitted it to Tracy about a month ago, six weeks ago, um, which is why she put us on the docket for this. She wants to put the two things together.
We did, we, we received both applications.
Okay.
Thanks, Tracy.
They should be in the boards packet. Jim, I didn't send it to you.
Oh, that's okay, okay, no problem.
Yeah, no, I, it is in the packet, I'm double checking too, cuz I thought I saw it. So anyone on the, does anyone on the board double check if you wanna look at it again? Does anyone have any questions about specifically the entertainment lessons they filled out? All right, do we wanna make a motion?
Um, and, and can you remind me, Sarah, what are the exact hours? Cuz I'm having trouble finding the internet, uh, entertainment packet.
Yeah, so, um, and I guess from what I've seen previously this evening, maybe we should say entertainment from four till nine. Um, I think we had, we're planning music from four thirty to five, but to make it easier, if we could do from four till nine PM. Um, and say it'll be a simple sound system, just like at the holiday stroll, and you'll see that, but it'll be on the common with a small tent if required, um, for the rain, full sound system with a couple of microphones for people to play from.
Okay, I would have moved, moved to approve a, um, one-day entertainment license for April twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two, with the rain date of May sixth, twenty-twenty-two for the South Shore Eco Fest from four PM until nine PM. On this, on our town common.
Thank you, Jean. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All right, roll call vote, Jack?
Jack great night.
Corey Evans eye.
Jeanne Haley Dippleduck?
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. Thank you all, we're very excited for this event. It's going to be great.
Thank you, it's gonna be.
Very much.
Thank you so much.
Oh, exciting. All right, have a good night.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
You have nothing further for me, I'll also.
You are dismissed, Jim, thanks for being here.
Fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
All right, the next order of business, and this is something I spoke with the school committee chairman Craig McClellan about. I didn't ask him to be here tonight, I didn't think it would be that controversial, but does everyone remember the lovely senior pictures and portraits we had on the common last year for all the graduates? They are asking to do that again in the same way that they did last year, starting, um, early May through Memorial Day. So I told him we would put that on the agenda. Are there any questions or issues with that? Diane?
Sorry, I have a weird mouse pad. Um, the, just through Memorial Day, um, is it before Memorial Day weekend or actually through Memorial Day, where I know that there's, you know, the veterans may not.
That is a good question. I actually can't remember exactly when they came down last year, but we could stipulate to him when we would like them to come down, and I'm sure they'd be fine with that if people have a preference on that. I, I really don't remember when they came down though last year. Does anyone remember?
No, I, I, I do know that, you know, during the, um, the run-up to Memorial Day, um, the veterans affairs and the Legion, et cetera, really do a good job kinda sweeping the town and making sure that all the memorials and the common in particular are, um, but, but I could be wrong in terms of the location of these, these signs, so. Um, I'm happy to move it, subject to, um, confirmation.
Yep.
You know, um, from, from, especially our veteran service officer.
That's fine, and I know that Craig and his team will be willing to work with them, so we can put that into the motion.
I would second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Jack great night.
Corey Evans eye.
Jeanne Haley Dippleduck?
Diane?
Carrie Thompson, I. Okay, great. All right, moving on to Cohasset Earth Day cleanup for April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two. This is always a successful event and it's been growing every year. Who do we have here? Maybe Peter, possibly. I thought I saw him in here. Hi, Peter, can you hear us? There you are. Thanks for being here, Peter, and thanks for all your work on this, as always. Oh, you're muted.
There we go.
There we are.
Okay, uh, thank you all, uh, for having me. Um, this is the, uh, fourth, year that we're, uh, organizing the, uh, Earth Day celebration. And this year's, uh, theme is climate change, by the way. Earth Day is Friday, Friday the twenty-second. And the event is planned for Saturday, the twenty-third, rain day on Sunday, the twenty-fourth. Um, the event planning, the event application review board, uh, passed it through completely. Uh, they, there wasn't too much to really, uh, they had no objections to anything that we were going to be doing. It's the same formula that we've used the last, the last four years. As usual, uh, we'll need permission from the town to set up at the front door of town hall. Uh, we need the grassy area as, as the registration area. Um, also, we will need to put the dumpster at the rear of the town hall parking lot, um, as we have every year. And, um, other than that, uh, the usual support from the town of tables and chairs, uh, construction-grade, uh, trash bags and a DPW crew. You know, truck with a couple of guys to haul away, uh, tires and other large debris that we find and.
Okay, yeah, no, I remember you had a few tables out, I believe, last year, Peter.
We had, uh, we had five, and actually, this year, there's been requests for seven.
Okay.
Uh, uh, obviously, the open space in rec.
Yep.
Committee is.
Safe Harbor had one, I know, and.
Yeah, we do the registration and, and it, you know, we have the instruction package that we hand out. We'll have a gift bag, you know, tote bag to hand out. Uh, and people select where they would like to do the cleanup. Okay, and we, we note all that so that we don't send people to the same location, blah, blah, blah.
Yep.
So, uh, the Alternative Energy Committee, uh, has asked for a table.
Great.
Uh, Wild Cohasset, who, uh, both the A, uh, AEC and Wild Cohasset were there last year, as was Safe Harbor, which will be there this year with the ambassador, the student ambassadors. Um, they did a great job of, uh, focusing on, uh, drug and alcohol paraphernalia. That's how, that's what they're picking up. Uh, the coastal, uh, the Cohasset Coastal Research Kids, uh, are gonna have a table. Uh, the Cohasset Conservation Trust, uh, wants to have a table. And the Democratic Town Committee wants to have a table so that they can explain, uh, ledges, the current legis- this legislature in the, uh, state legislature at the moment for climate change. Uh, and they'll be available, they'll have a table to specifically do that. They won't be proselytizing in any way, just explaining what the, uh, uh, climate change. explaining what the, uh, climate change legis, legislation is and that's about.
I think it's great how you continue to get so much community buy-in with.
Yeah, I hope, uh, I hope it's, uh, that's strong again this year. It was very strong last year.
Mm-hmm. Any questions? Oh, sorry. Yeah, no, it's, it was great last year.
Between about a hundred and sixty to a hundred and eighty people. Showed up and, uh, went out and cleaned. We, we were running out of places to, to send them.
I remember that. Let's hope for good weather again.
Yes, I hope so. Uh, again, we will have the, uh, the Sunday as our backup.
Other questions for Peter? I know a few of us went last year and know what this is about.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a great, uh, it's a great community event. Uh, it's a lot of families out.
All right, if there's no other, oh, Jean.
No, I just wanted to, um, encourage people to participate. You find trash in the weirdest places in Cohasset, and so it's pretty eye-opening and, um.
We, uh, we fill up the dumpster.
Yeah, really do.
Lot of trash out there.
Yeah.
And Peter, any, if you get us any stuff you want us to share on social media with our contacts.
Yeah, uh, yeah, we, we, we're building up our campaign right now.
Okay, okay.
I would like to have, uh, on the landing page, on the, on the town landing page, have the event on the, uh, you know, the first page of the website, the town website.
Yeah, we can do that.
Instructions, you know, uh, so people know, you know, bring your own gloves and, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Stay off of, yeah, don't go in the water, you know, the usual stuff.
Long sleeves, long pants, you don't get poison ivy.
Yeah, well, you know, wear protective clothing.
Yeah.
Even if it's warm. You don't want to get scratched up. Watch out for broken bottles, all that stuff.
Corey.
Yeah, I mean, not a question, but just a, a comment that, uh, yeah, obviously, it's amazing how much trash gets picked up, but, um, for some people, uh, Earth Cleanup Day is not just this one day. I do want to give a shout out to our own, uh, Harbor Committee Chair, Tim Davis. I saw him walking the common with a grabber and a bag, uh, just the other day. So, um, you know, you don't need to wait for an event like this to happen to clean something up.
Sam does it as well, and, you know.
Dick Avery.
And Cohasset that walk with bags. And it's a great, uh, it, it's a great cultural tradition. So, um, that's it.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're ready to make a motion, are we? Is that what you're doing?
We'll want to help, you know, getting word out. Uh, we're talking to, you know, to Don Royne, one, four, three, see if he can film it again this year and all that stuff.
However, we can help you get this out to everyone.
Much appreciated.
So, I'll, I'll move that we approve the Cohasset Earth Day cleanup for April twenty third, twenty twenty two, um, from nine AM to two thirty and a little bit of time on either way for setup and cleanup.
All right, roll call vote, Jack.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Jean Haley, dippled up?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye. Thank you, Peter. We're very excited.
Thank you, and you're all welcome to join in.
We will, I'll be there.
All right. Thank you. Thanks again for.
All right, have a good night.
Yep.
Okay, our last event is our Safe Harbor Youth Ambassadors, their Cohasset Minds Matter, which is scheduled for May twenty first, twenty twenty two. I'm not sure we have someone joining us. Nicole. Nicole, it's so good to see your face.
Hello.
Hi, welcome. Haven't had you in a meeting in a while. It's so good to see you, seriously.
It's very good to see you all. I appreciate it. Um, but I am not the one presenting. It is, um, our two ambassadors, Frances and Catherine, who are in the waiting room as well. Let them in.
Okay. Hi, Frances and Catherine. Hi, thanks for being here. So good to see you. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. We always love anything related to Safe Harbor, so tell us a little bit about this event so the town can hear.
Um, we actually have a slideshow that the, um, a committee of Safe Harbor, uh, we put together, so I don't know if you want to share that?
Yeah, no, you absolutely can. You should have sharing ability.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay.
Perfect.
So our names are Frances and Catherine, and we're two Cohasset High School juniors, and we're part of the Youth Ambassador Program of Safe Harbor. We're looking to present our proposal for a Mental Health Day event that we feel would be beneficial for the Cohasset community.
So here is a, uh, digitalized version of the Cohasset Minds Matter, just event design, um, by our very own Youth Ambassador, uh, Nicholas Askew.
Love it.
The Cohasset Youth Ambassadors have been working for a long time on creating an inclusive and informative event based on de-stigmatizing mental health and its importance within the town. The name of the event is called Cohasset Minds Matter, and we are hoping to have it the weekend of Saturday, May twenty first, from one to three PM. We set up beginning at eleven and clean up at three fifteen at the Commons.
So our, uh, plan of action is that on the day of the event, parking will be available at the Town Hall in the parking lot and then the public lot in the village. We'll arrive for setup at eleven AM and we will, um, we have yet to decide if there will be food or beverages. Um, there will be live music played by Jim Armstrong, as well as his students, and two tents will be used for crafts. We also, um, will set up four to five tables as workstations for participants with around twenty-five chairs. And then we will begin breakdown of the event around three fifteen PM.
Our target audience for this event would primarily be the community as a whole, to bring everyone together in one space and make connections. All ages of the Cohasset community are important to this event and are more than welcome to attend. We can incorporate activities for younger ages, including rock painting, creating stress balls in chalk, as well as activities for older ages like yoga and meditation.
So, um, how will this event benefit our town? So firstly, this event will occur in the week preceding National Prevention Week, which is May eighth through May fourteenth. Um, people, uh, in the community, as well as our own Cohasset Youth Ambassadors, have, uh, discovered that Cohasset is a very high-performing and stressful high school, which leads to, um, a statistical increase in the mental health issues within the Cohasset Middle School and Cohasset High School. Mental health is a topic that can te, connect to all ages, and our event will serve to connect the whole community. People that may be struggling will feel less isolated by seeing the community spreading awareness and be concerned about their mental health. Um, our event will help promote local names, uh, for yoga, the band, and service dogs. So far, the yoga instructor and service dogs have uh, been confirmed and agreed to participate in the event, and we are waiting to hear back from the band. Um, this event will be conversation-provoking, spread awareness, normalize conversations around mental health, and will help create a conversation regarding mental health, um, in the community. And then it will also provide helpful resources and coping strategies.
Here is how we envision the layout for our event on the Town Common. The sidewalk for chalk will be parallel to North Main Street, and the stress ball station and rock painting station would be adjacent to Highland Avenue. Additionally, the service dog area would be stationed in the middle of the Commons, facing the yoga station in North Main Street and adjacent to the live band setup.
Any questions?
That was great. It was so good to hear you both present that. That was thorough and thoughtful, and I loved it. And really a creative event. I mean, as we know, mental health struggles are just everywhere, especially with young people, especially with high achievers, which a lot of our Cohasset young people are, and I just think it's so important to set this tone and make people more comfortable talking about mental health in general and feeling more safe to do these types of activities, and it's, it's just a great overall atmosphere that I think you're trying to create, so thank you. Diane?
Thank you. That was such a thorough presentation. I wish everybody's presentation was, was that good, and I want to sign up, Nicole, to, you know how to find me, to, uh, sponsor the stress ball table. Please. And save a few for me. I'm serious. I, I really do.
I love that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think the entire Select Board should probably sponsor the stress ball table.
We all need a stress ball table right now.
No, but thank you for the great presentation and keep on the band. The band is always notoriously hard to pin down.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Frances and Catherine, do either of you want to run for Select Board?
They have to be eighteen.
Got to get a little older first.
Excuse me. In, in the interest of mental health, I think that was a very unwise and cruel suggestion to make to these fine young ladies. Their life is worth more, and they don't, so no matter what charity says, I know stuff you don't know yet, so.
All right, well, I'll be at the stress ball table with you. All right. If there's no further questions, we can do a motion.
I move that we approve the, um, Safe Harbor event.
All right, is there a second? Second. Roll call vote, Jack.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Jean Haley, dippled up?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye. Thank you, ladies, for being here.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
Well done.
Looking forward to it.
Best organization in town.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, we've made it through licenses, permits, and events. We're done with that big chunk for the night. Our next agenda item, we actually can postpone. It is the cemetery plot repurchase at Woodside, and I didn't get word that they would like to postpone this. So if everyone is okay with that, we need to move this to a future meeting. All right. Paula, I saw you come in. Welcome. Moving on to our community septic loan. Thanks for being here, Paula.
Well, thanks for having me. Um, you have a community septic loan paperwork that we need to, um, to sign tonight, uh, if you're willing. Um, the community septic program is where we, uh, borrow money from the, um, state, and then we, um, offer loans to community, uh, to residents who want to either redo their septic system or hook up to a sewer system. And, um, so we try to borrow the money in chunks and, and try and guess at the rate that, uh, the community residents are looking for that money. And, uh, last time, I think we did a hundred and fifty thousand, and this is part of that same piece, but, um, we need to, to sign more paperwork for an additional hundred thousand. The interim note right now for us is at zero percent, but this will get rolled over into a bond and, and be at, um, two percent. And then we, um, offered to, like I said, to the residents. They borrow the money and they pay it back through their taxes, so we have portioned it over twenty years, I think it is.
Okay.
So, uh, what I am looking for tonight is, um, the clerk of the Select Board to, to read the vote, and then if you wouldn't, um, mind voting in favor of that, and there's also paperwork to be signed by, um, by, with Tracy in the, the Select Board's, um, room. So if you could make your way there at some point, um, over the next couple of days, that would be awesome, and then I could get that off to the line council, and that would make the money available for homeowners who are looking to upgrade their systems.
Okay. Any questions before we let Jean read this? All right, Madam Clerk.
All right, I, the clerk of the Select Board of the Town of Cohasset, Massachusetts, certify that, uh, a meeting of the board held March first, twenty twenty two, of which meaning all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present, the following vote was passed, all of which appears upon the official record of the board in my custody, that the town shall issue a bond or bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars, the quote bonds, pursuant to chapters twenty-nine C and one-eleven of the general laws, and a vote of the town passed April thirtieth, two thousand and eleven, Article fifteen for a community septic management loan program, the quote project, that in the interim, that in anticipation of the issuance of the bonds, the treasurer is authorized to issue an interim loan note or notes, the quote notes, from time to time in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed one hundred thousand, that each bond or note shall be issued as a single registered secretary, security and sold to the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the quote trust, at a price determined pursuant to the financing agreement, that the treasurer is authorized to determine the date, the form, the maximum interest rate, and the principal maturities of each bond and note, and to execute a financing agreement or agreements with the trust with respect to the sale of the bonds and notes. Such date, form, and maturities and the specific interest rate or rates of the bonds and notes to be approved by a majority of the Select Board and the treasurer and evidenced by their execution of the bonds or notes, that any certificates or documents relating to each bond and note collectively, the quote documents may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a quote PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manual executed counterpart signature page to such document and electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents in all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. Number six, that all action taken to date by the town and its officers and agents to carry out the project and its financing, including the execution of any loan commitment or agreement by the treasurer are hereby ratified, approved, and confirmed, and number seven, that the treasurer and the other appropriate town officials are each hereby authorized to take any and all actions necessary or convenient to carry out the provisions of this vote, including execution and delivery of the financing agreements and the project regulatory agreements relating to the project. I further certify that the vote was adopted at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot that notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda of the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above vote was filed with the town clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in nine forty CMR twenty-nine point oh-three-two B, or at least forty-eight hours known, including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting and remains so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the sale of the bonds or notes were taken in executive session and that the official record of the meeting was made available to the public promptly and remains available to the public, all in accordance with General Law Chapter thirty A, Sections eighteen through twenty-five as amended. I further certify that the vote has not been amended, supplemented, or revoked, and remains in effect on this date.
Woo, all right, that was a mouthful. Good job.
Is that, um, is, do I move that, or do I second it? How did it start?
You second. That, that was the motion, I believe.
I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'd like clarification of.
Just vote, Jack. Just vote.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Jean Haley, dippled up?
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye. All right, woo, thank you, Paula.
All right, uh, just one thing I, I didn't mention. I, I only need a majority of people to sign the paperwork that Tracy has. Uh, Jean, you'll have to be one of them, because one of this vote here, you have to sign. Uh, but then as soon as we hit a majority, maybe Tracy can let the other two know that they're off the hook. All right.
Sounds good.
Very good.
We appreciate it, Paula. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. All right, speaking of Tim Davis, moving on to our Harbor Committee chip working group.
Yeah, uh, hi, I'm not sure why.
We can hear you loud and clear, but we can't.
You can hear me. I don't know. Oh, here we go.
Man behind the curtain, yeah.
Yeah.
Are you, he's out picking up trash right now.
There we are.
Oh, we got the snowy background tonight.
Well, I figure you'd probably rather look at that than look at my office, so, uh, anyway, thank you very much. I will, uh, I will get right into it.
Right.
The, uh, Cohasset Municipal Harbor Plan was approved in July of twenty twenty and included fifty-two suggested projects related to the betterment of Cohasset Harbor. With your permission, I would like to briefly review the working. With your permission, I would like to briefly review the workings of twelve organizations engaged in the revitalization, protection, and conservation of Cohasset Harbor and the waterways of Cohasset. Those organizations include town-appointed committees and working groups, nonprofit organizations, and citizens groups. I believe that while none have conflicting missions, they do have overlapping interests, and as such, are working to ensure as efficient coordination as possible. Implementation and action are the priorities. Meetings are a necessary part of the process, but we hope not get in the way of our primary objectives. Cohasset Harbor Committee. The Cohasset Harbor Committee in its current incarnation was formed for the purpose of creating the Cohasset Municipal Harbor Plan. It completed that work, as I mentioned, in July twenty twenty. It since has become a bit dysfunctional, and the implementation of the harbor plan has been assigned to other groups. There are eleven members of the committee requiring a minimum of six for a quorum. There are now eight members with three vacant. As an example, there was a scheduled harbor committee meeting this afternoon, and only three members were present. The planning director and I have discussed a possible restructure of the harbor committee with a relevant mission, and we will get to that and bring it to you at some later date. In the meantime, the Cohasset Harbor Infrastructure Planning Working Group, CHIP, has been working on a number of harbor plan-related projects, including the Parker Avenue Boat Ramp, which unfortunately has had to be postponed until the fall due to supply chain issues, Government Island Dock and Pier renovation, which is moving forward and getting into final plans, waiting for grant presentations, the Captain's Walk, which we've done a survey of the Captain's Walk around the harbor and have entered into discussions about how it might, where it might go, and what it might look like. Dredging, which is a forever problem we have in Cohasset Harbor in the channel, and the harbor master is, has got, is working on that, but we've got another two years to wait before we dredge, and the channel by Whitehead is filling in. I personally know that because I have run a ground there. The breakwater and sea level infrastructure renovation, we need to do a an engineering study to find out what needs to be done with that, and in coordination with that, we need to discuss the jurisdiction of that. I won't get into what the research has shown as to who really has jurisdiction over the breakwater, but we will bring that to you at some later date. Harbor area parking, which is a critical issue, and Cohasset Harbor Governance. This will be turned over to the Cohasset Harbor Governance Working Group when it begins its deliberations. The Cohasset Harbor Governance Working Group has been approved by the select board and will be chaired by Lisa Hewitt and have its first meeting at some point, hopefully in the near future. The Cohasset Harbor Climate Resilience Initiative held its first summit on January twenty-fifth of this year with three esteemed speakers, Mark Borelli, Tom Bell, who you may know, and Jack Buckley of CSCR. They presented compelling information and data on the potential impact of climate change, tidal surge, and the sea level rise to Cohasset Harbor and the broader Cohasset community. I think some of you may have seen that and been at that. The next meeting is scheduled for April, and we will be noticing that to the, to the community. George Baumgarten chairs that, and he does, he's doing a great job of pulling that along. The Cohasset Historical Commission, we've been working collaborative with them on the Captain's Walk and the Fisherman's Well. Discussions are also underway to determine the appropriate signage and historical markers around the harbor. The Cohasset Sewer Commission, the CHIP has been collaborating with the Sewer Commission on regional sewer approach with this, with situat, which could help clean up the Gulf, Gulf River, and Cohasset Harbor. CHIP has also been collaborating with the Gulf River Association on the same issues of cleaning up the Gulf and the Gulf River. The Cohasset Commercial Fishing Association. The car, the harbor committee has been working with this fishing association on a number of issues. It's a somewhat loose federation of individuals who make a living fishing and love the sea. They are not particularly adept at meetings, but some of them do collaborate, and in fact, we've had many of them help and input on some of the issues in the harbor. The issues we've been working on are the Government Island Pier and Dock renovation, dredging, agriculture, and I will say agriculture is a big thing coming to Cohasset. It requires a shellfish constable, which the town measure and town manager assures me is imminent. It also requires a town bylaw, which will make sure it gets drafted and sent to town meeting as soon as we have a constable. Just a bit on the shellfish constable, Cohasset now has a natural resources officer who we share with Norwell. Josh Kimball has many skill sets, including having served as a harbor master, agriculture farmer, nuclear radio radioactive response officer, and he's a cop. A cop who does not like to write tickets. He prefers education and explanation to writing tickets, unless, of course, it's for littering. If he sees you littering, you may well become incarcerated. The Cohasset community is very fortunate to have Josh working with us, and I hope you all get to know him. Friends of Bassington Beach, it was organized to conserve and preserve Cohasset Harbor. Significant capital was raised to fund legal fees, eelgrass studies, indigenous shellfish studies, and property surveys. FOBB will continue to collaborate with other harbor organizations in the issues of ecology, environmental protection, and natural infrastructure that protects the harbor. As mentioned above, we will soon have a shellfish constable who is also dedicated to the conservation and preservation of Cohasset Harbor as well as the wider community. The Elm Street Working Group. The Harbor Committee representative on the Elm Street Working Group has been working with the group to implement appropriate changes to Elm Street at the intersection of Margin Cove Border and Elm Streets. Safe Harbor, and we've heard a little bit about Safe Harbor. The Harbor Committee met with Safe Harbor, had a meeting last year. We'll have another one this year. And I think that actually the natural resource officer I mentioned would be a great addition to that conversation to provide a safe and enjoyable experience for all in Cohasset Harbor. And finally, the Citizens Parking Initiative, a group of concerned and interested citizens have been looking at ways to improve parking at the, in the harbor community as well as in the village. The plan is to work with residents, commercial and residential, to develop a proposal to help alleviate the parking problems facing our community. I'm sure there is much more I could discuss, and I'm happy to answer any questions. At this time, however, I would like to thank the many people who have been working with the harbor-related organizations to help us implement the Cohasset Municipal Harbor Plan. I would also like to specifically thank several members of the town administration for their work and assistance. Harbor Master Lori Gibbons, Planning Director Lauren Lynn, Procurement Director Michelle Leary, and Assistant Planner Retired Brianna Bennett. Without their help, the task at hand would be far more daunting. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. That was thorough and helpful and well-prepared. All right, Diane, I saw your hand go up immediately.
Just a real quick question from the early part of your presentation, Tim. Thank you very much. So much work to do and I'm glad you're helping with it. The Harbor Committee, when you said you were only able to get three people to that Harbor Committee meeting, that obviously is concerning for all of us, and I just wonder, is the committee fully constituted? Are there open positions on the Harbor Committee, or, you know, what can we do to help that? I mean, I do appreciate the need to have a discussion about, you know, a recharge or a re, or whatever.
Well, I think, I think that's really the point. The Harbor Committee was expanded to eleven seats prior to the start of our process for getting the Municipal Harbor Plan going. Of those eleven seats, eight are filled, and of those eight, three, including myself, showed up for the, for the meeting this afternoon. Now fortunately, we have the CHIP, and the CHIP was set up perhaps in a bit of a Machiavellian way a number of years ago to deal with exactly this consequence. So the CHIP is following on the implementation process of some of the fifty-two projects called out in the harbor plan. I think that the issue is that the current structure of the Harbor Committee is really information sharing structure. It, it really isn't structured to do anything, and that's where these working groups can really, really benefit. So I think we need to look at, how do we involve the harbor community without necessarily have them on a a committee that they have to show up for and then not show up for, and so we can't have a quorum. If we can't have a quorum, we can have a meeting.
Is that, is that something the governance subcommittee is working on?
It would be wonderful if the governance working group would, except the Chair of the Governance Working Group didn't show up for the Harbor Committee meeting. And there haven't, we've had a governance working group for, gosh, how long now, and had yet to have a meeting? So I can't answer that, Diane. I wish I could wave a magic wand, or if you'd like, just like to wave a wand and make me czar, then I could do it, but short of that.
We don't have that authority.
Harbor czar.
Short of that, I, I don't have an answer for it, Diane. I think we have to take a fresh look at, at what we really want for a harbor committee.
I think that's a really good point, Tim, and just sidebar on the aquaculture issue. I know we've, I've talked to you about this specifically, Tim, but we have talked to council about it, and we do, are preparing a statement for when the timing comes for us to submit a statement about that as a town. So Town Council has gotten involved in the ongoing aquaculture issues as well, and we're, we're watching that on other town agendas and situat town agendas as we speak.
Okay, I appreciate that. I did have a, a meeting with Amy.
Yep.
And, and Lisa Hewitt was involved in that. There's a lot going on there. Friends of Bassington Beach, of course, is engaged.
Yep.
It would be very helpful to have the support of the Cohasset Select Board. If, you know, if we could get that support, there is really, what we've determined is there's really no place for a agriculture farm in Cohasset Harbor. It just makes no sense whatsoever.
And there's ongoing environmental issues too. Whether that space is even appropriate, there's the recreation issue. I mean, I'm not speaking for the whole board right now, Tim, but I believe you do have the, the board's interest in this idea, and we can have a specific item on the agenda once we see, not a situat moving to get our statement ready, because we've been working on drafting it, it just hasn't been the right timing yet.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. I'm happy to meet with Amy and discuss it with her because they, we have been doing the same thing. We have done a complete survey of the harbor. We are not going to make that public for, for a lot of reasons, legal reasons. We also have determined there are some jurisdictional issues that go back to the early nineteen hundreds, actually starting in the late eighteen hundreds, that gives Cohasset a lot more jurisdiction than we might otherwise recognize. So I'm happy to work with a town council to, to make sure that we're all on the same page there.
Thank you, and to be continued on that. Okay, Jack, your hands up.
Yeah, thank you, Tim. I'd like to echo a lot of what Tim says. I'm the liaison to the Harbor Committee. I wasn't there, Tim, but I'm actually in South Carolina on a business trip. Wonders of Zoom, I'm still on this meeting. And before that, I was a liaison for conservation on the harbor for a couple of years. So what Tim is talking is something that we as a board need to pay attention to. It is unwieldy. He just hit some highlights. I mean, we had the oyster farm issue. Is there room for some kind of thing on the sewer? Is with working with situat jurisdiction of Bassington Beach. There's a whole variety of just governance. There's an awful lot. Now, people should understand in the town that the Harbor Committee is an advisory committee, and its charge is to look at all these things and advise us as a select board of what they see and what they might suggest that we do about it. And I think if you listen to what Tim just said, what the message really coming loud and clear is that it is time to start building some kind of government governmental structure that can step in with some authority to do some various things. And it's very difficult to do because there's just a lot of different overlapping jurisdictions, which get very complicated. But I do think it's something that needs to be done, and I think we ought to, town notes, Tim, a little bit of gratitude for hanging in there, which was just absolutely frustrating, because every time you solve one thing, another thing comes up, and they're all interrelated, and some of them like maritime law, real estate law, ownership laws are very, very convoluted. They go back many, many years, and they all intersect. So thank you, Tim. You've, you've done well.
That's him. This has been a tireless few years, I know, and there's so much good I think we see on the horizon with the harbor and what you're doing with the Harbor Committee, and just thank you for all of that. I know it feels like it's slow-moving at times. We are committed to trying to help you speed some of these things up when we can.
Well, I think what we should do is we should probably, and all of us as select board members should kind of give it some thought and then say, what is the next step? And I think the next step is some kind of a reconstituted, as Tim suggests, with a little bit more authority, and then, you know, develop a battle plan, if you will.
Yep. Jean?
Well, thank you, Tim, for all of your tireless work and advocacy on behalf of the harbor and the surrounding projects. I particularly enjoyed the Cohasset Harbor Resilience Initiative. In my mind, there's probably no more important issue that Cohasset has to grapple with for the sake of its municipal assets, as well as critical areas that apply to thirty percent of our residences if we have storms. And so I, I, I just wanted to commend you again. I know we talked about this earlier, but it did make such a big impact, and, and I appreciate that you put that all on the website too, so people can refer to it and see it, and I would just do a public announcement for you. The website does have really great information on it relating to that video, as well as the presentations associated with the video, and I'm excited to see the next one. And so I, I wonder, given the enormity of all the projects that are out there, and I'm sure you've thought about this, and I know that you've been doing this in the concept, in the context of the Master Plan Committee too. It strikes me, given the difficulty you're getting also with trying to get people to come to meetings, maybe it might make sense in the context of rethinking governance to like, really think about, are there like a few big projects that we can try to accomplish out of this, like, really long list that we can focus on and move forward in a tangible way to help, you know, get people sort of like refocused on a few of those, because I wonder if a part of it is people are just overwhelmed by the magnitude of work we're facing.
It's been a rough couple of years too. I think people are, people are trying to reset a little bit with life, and I, I mean, we can maybe try to get more motivation happening now as we're heading into spring possibly.
Well, that, that could be, but let me, let me just say this. There were fifty-two suggestions in the plan. Of those fifty-two, we have, we, and I say we through the, you know, really the twelve organizations I just mentioned, really have prioritized the, those fifty-two to the ones that really have near-term importance and impact. And the people that are working on them, particularly the CHIP, which has George Baumgarten, Mike Sardina, and the Harbor Master, that's a well-functioning. which has George Baumgarten, Mike Sardina, and the Harbor Master, that's a well-functioning organization. And that works well, collaborates well, it, you know, everybody shows up. And it does, it does well. So I I think with that group, we we can continue on with the implementation. I know that the people on the Governance Working Group are well-meaning. They volunteered, and I really applaud and appreciate. I mean, we're all volunteers. Volunteering. The only thing I would say is if you don't have time to volunteer, if you don't have time to do it, don't volunteer. We'll get somebody else, because it it doesn't do us any good to have a committee that is non-functional. So your point's well-taken, Jean, and certainly I'm open to suggestions. But I I think that most of what's going on is is going on efficiently and effectively. And I certainly am committed to continuing with it. So, you know, if there's a better way to do it, I'm I'm open to suggestions.
Hi, Lisa, we saw you. I thought it was Mike with his hand up.
No, it's me. I just wanted to, if I, if I may.
Yeah, no.
Just add some comments. I unfortunately did not know that Tim was coming this evening before the board. I I met, I saw him last night at Rotary, but we didn't have a chance to be updated on that. The Governance Subcommittee has been constituted. We do have a date for our next meeting. I have been in contact with council and also with Chris Senior and Tracy, and we're posting it, and we're gonna have it organized. And as you know, because you deliberated and adopted the charge for the Governance Committee, which includes the constitution of the the Harbor Committee. In addition to that, it's interesting, because I I practically daily communication with George Baumgarten, because we're working together on this series of programs, and also we share positions on the Cohasset Maritime Institute. I believe that a lot of people thought that the meeting today was canceled. Because I even have a, an email, because I triple-checked it, and it it says canceled. On tentative hold on today's meeting. So there may have been some confusion. I do agree with Tim that the Harbor Committee governance structure needs to be revisited. But I I had to take exception to the idea that that I didn't show up on purpose today, or that, you know, we weren't moving along as quickly as we could on the Governance Subcommittee. Debbie Shad, as you know, who's a very knowledgeable person, has been appointed. David Farag, who is very knowledgeable, is going to be working on this, and many others that are, you know, by constitution of the governance charge are also going to be working on this. So just, I just felt like I, you you probably needed to know that. And, you know, we're happy to serve, and and we hope to, we're going to be beginning on the eighth. I had two separate conversations with Chris Senior too, on the phone, just to chat about how to go forward. It's a working committee, it's not a working committee, you know, the rules about open meeting law, the the rules of the road about engaging town council. I know, you know, being a general council of state agency, I know you don't let people just call your council, because that rigs up the bill. So we didn't want to do that. So we've been doing preliminary work to set it up. So the eighth is when it's going to be posted, and and we will commence working on on the adopted governance charge that you have all adopted, which includes the structure of the Harbor Committee. So thank you, and I appreciate you letting me speak.
Thank you. And again, I I understand how there are meeting confusions and complications, and everyone's busy. So we weren't thinking bad things of you, Lisa, but it helps to have you clarify that.
No, I just think it's, people, you know, went to other, wanted to be asked.
No, I know, I know.
It's the best show in town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Other questions or comments for Tim and/or Lisa? This is obviously a subject that we need to have on future agendas. There's a lot of ongoing issues we need to be talking about. So this is a to-be-continued, clearly, but anything else for tonight?
Thank you, Tim.
And we will be in touch. Thank you very much for all of that update. That was helpful.
Thank you. Onto the State of the Union.
Yep. I I wonder who got higher ratings tonight, our meeting or the State of the Union. We'll see.
I think, I think Vladimir Putin did. All right, thank you.
Well, I, yeah.
All right.
I suspect that we got higher ratings earlier.
I think we might. I think earlier, we probably, I think, I think Biden's beating us right now, but earlier we were beating him with viewership. All right. Moving on to our, finally getting to talk about our warrant. We have town meeting coming up on the horizon. There's a lot of good things happening on the warrant. So, Chris, we finally get to talk about that.
So let me just share the screen, and I'll take you through a quick walk. I'll go to the, let me go to the list of the articles. I think it might be easier to start here. So at the moment, the warrant has twenty-one articles, the vast majority of which are returning ones. The budget, capital, things of that sort, the the specific project changes, but the core articles are the same. So, you know, annual town report, there are points of committees, if there aren't any, and they're not often, they're not always are. Budget, unpaid bills, which I'm afraid, I think I was already reporting, we have one or two. Supplemental appropriations, stabilization funders contributions, capital proven budget, the the annual renewal of the revolving fund spending limits. First new one is this, the creation of a revolving after hours building inspections. The, the article is going to be about setting up a revolving fund to supplement work to allow for work to go on over the weekends. You know, we do have building inspectors and contractors that are contracted services that that help us out from time to time. With some of the major projects that are looming right now, there's going to be work on weekends and on after hours. We're going to need to supplement the the support staff, because John can't be there all the time, and having revolving funds, the money that gets paid to support that service just runs right through revolving fund, doesn't it? So that's, that's kind of a new one. The the next couple are, you know, I don't have any one-time cost projects in here yet, but that's something we do annually. The renewal of the Mass General Laws, Chapter ninety-one liability, that's something we do every year. Annual real estate exemptions is doing every, is something that's every year, and it's required annual renewal. This is for veterans and elder, elder tax exemptions for real estate. I don't know if the assessors are coming forward with any new ones from time to time. The state allows you to do new ones. And it really is helpful. I know that they've been talking about changing some of the financial to allow people with a little bit more income, because the numbers are very low. So I haven't heard anything more from the assessor show on that. C P C, and that's an annual article. They're in the process. They met last night, so they're deep into the process. You heard Paula earlier talk about the old Colony Loan Program. We're reaching the cap that we have to authorize to let people use. So Paul is exploring how much more authority we're allowed to have under the state program. So if if that's allowed, we'll put this on here, because that's a really big benefit to residents who need to convert from septic systems to to a sewer or upgraded telephone system. We had talked already, you had heard Town Hall Building Committee report about going to a construction manager at risk. Would allocate that two hundred thousand from the money that was already allocated to the project. The transfer land to the Formable Housing Trust. Again, we've heard initial presentation on that, still waiting for more information about the the actual parcels. Turn of energy, the support for the microgrid, Tanya Baddell is on the, on her way to the Capital Budget Committee for formal review of that request. That's working its way through the process. There are, these next two are tied, are linked. As you may have heard, the, there's been a an increasing failure of the septic at the Cook Estates right on Sawyer Street, and the Board of Health has ordered them to hook up to sewer. Reasons. There's going to need to be two things done here. One, that the sewer district will have to be expanded for more to include them. And by the way, the sewer district is, in conversations, the supervisors, they're aware of it, they're supportive of it. And this is also a really important environmental issue, because the the failing septic is going to go into Peppermint Brook, which goes to the town's water system. So putting more pollutants into the town's Lily Pond Water System is not a good idea. So the the other article would be to authorize bonding and betterment. So to, we would pay for the construction and then have the residents pay for it. So so to authorize the bonding for the construction of the pipe that link their system into the town sewer system. And we go kind of up across the hill and connect over at the Deer Hill School. There's a pump station there, so the resident, they have to pay to upgrade that pump station. And it would be done off school hours, off school calendar, I should say, so it wouldn't affect anybody. And we had a call today with with, trying from council's office, Pam Fahy, and and Paul and I are to talk about next steps. So council's pulling together a checklist of what we need to do to get that done. And as you also had already heard, there's two citizens petitions, the ones, one would require a public vote for any single item of a million dollars or more, regardless if if it had to go for a debt exclusion any, any bond or any use of free cash, any amount of a million dollars or more. And then the other one is to allow citizens' remote participation at town meetings. And both of those are scheduled, I believe, for March fifteenth to do public presentations. If the board wants to schedule any of them earlier, because we try to do it jointly with the advisory committee, just to limit the number of nights everybody's out. So that is the warrant as it currently stands. What the board historically has done is just start to place articles on the warrant formally. You can do them, you know, from time to time. You can choose to do them as a block. I mean, so think like, you know, reports of committees.
The generic ones, yeah, the ones we usually do, the beginning.
You might, you know, if you choose, you might want to wait until the full content of the budget. I mean, the budget is going to be on there anyway, but the content is not ready, the capital. But Articles one, two, two, eleven, and twelve are a final form already. So that's, that's the, the reports of committees, the town report, Chapter ninety-one liability, and the and the annual real estate exemption. So if you wanted to put those on the warrant tonight, just to start housekeeping, you could.
I think we can be ready to vote to place them on. Obviously, we're not recommending anything yet, but we can start voting to place them if the board agrees, or would the board rather wait? How are you all feeling? Cory is on a thumbs up.
Yeah. Let's move them.
Want to make a motion? Either one.
Go ahead, Dan.
I move that we place on the annual town meeting warrant Articles one, two, eleven, and twelve. Chris, just for clarification for the minutes, can you just read what those subject matters are?
Sure. It's a, it's the annual town report, which is Article one, the report of committees, which is Article two. Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter ninety-one liability, which is Article eleven. Additional real estate exemptions, annual renewal, which is Article twelve.
Great, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Motion made.
All right, we have a second. Jack, you're saying something, but I can't tell.
I meant to second that, but I was.
Okay, perfect. All right, well, great. You can vote. If there, is there any further discussion? All right, roll call vote, Jack.
Great, no.
For your Evan's eye?
Jeanne Lee Dibble, Doug.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I. All right, that's progress.
So next week, just as an advance, look, the water and sewer budgets are planned for next week. With advisory, so you can prepare for that. And then the joint meeting on the fifteenth will do the citizens petition. So you want to look ahead for those. That's the plan. Advisory is now meeting basically in parallel with you every Wednesday night, the whole. Capitol is meeting most Mondays until they're done, so we're in like So that's all, that's all that. Any other questions on the warrant at this point?
Like, I know, and I know Diane always says this, but we're doing the dance now of all of the committees and boards reviewing the warrant and getting ready each week. So it's going to be a busy march as always, but there's some good stuff on here. Cory?
I was just going to bring up that there's citizens petition floating around that I'd love to have this board adopt as our own.
Yes.
So let's put that on a future agenda.
It, I'm waiting, I'm actually playing phone tag with Tom Baker about it right now, but I agree, Cory, we should have that on a future agenda. So either next week or the week after, or sometime soon.
Excellent, thank you.
I I agree.
Yep, no, I think we all agree, and I think there's a likelihood we probably all support the the movement here. So, yes, to be continued on that. Diane?
I'm getting tired. So I just had a question about, I guess the first question I have is, do we know when we're going to go back to in-person meetings? And the reason I ask is relevant to the joint meetings that we have with advisory, because I I know advisory is not only meeting jointly with us, but then they're going to deliberate on the, on the articles that they're hearing with us on a sec, on a, in a second meeting within the same week. So they're scheduling out two nights a week.
Yeah.
And I wonder, because we're doing these remotely, whether, you know, their participa, if if we're doing them remotely, their participation could be simply either watching the, 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 the tape or whether we actually need them as a joint meeting to deliberate. I'm just trying to save our committee members' time out.
No, that's a valid question. I I mean, we have planned on being on Zoom for next Tuesday specifically, but I do think for some of these joint meetings, I think some of these other boards and committees do prefer it on Zoom, because it is easier to meet jointly. I'm open, though, to considering back in person after next week. Next week we'll be on Zoom. But I, I, you know, I think there's advantages and disadvantages to both, and we've talked about this before. But in terms of the joint meetings, it does feel like people are leaning towards a preference for Zoom. Cory and then Jack.
My only question is, I know Board of Health, I think, was talking about mask mandates in town buildings. Do we, I obviously wasn't watching the meeting. So Chris, do do we hear from Pam on anything with their feelings on the matter?
This could be my town manager update, so. In fact, they rescinded the indoor mask mandate, the mandatory indoor mask mandate. So that has been lifted in Cohasset, so I'd be public. So.
I know we have, we have done, as you all know, some in-person meetings with the masks on, and the audio is just not as good of quality. Jack?
You know, I think what Zoom, Zoom has shown is in a market increase in participation. We've made it easier for our citizens to be part of what we're doing. And also, quite honestly, it's easier for them to hear what we say. Sometimes that may not be a good thing, by the way. So I think we need to, I'm a strong advocate that, you know, our democratic system is stronger because of this. We're seeing for our joint meetings, and for people have to be in a lot of meetings. It enables us to be at meetings we couldn't be. Without Zoom, I couldn't be a participant in this, in this meeting. I think we need to figure this out, and it's a wonderful thing, and I think representative government is much stronger with Zoom. So we got to figure it out, and we can have a hybrid version.
Yep. Chris?
I would echo Slap and Great on this, because it really, you know, it's, there's so many meetings going on. And particularly at this time of year, it does make it easier for for staff to be in multiple places to, meeting to meeting. And there's a little logistic struggling. Sometimes we had three or four yesterday, and we all were starting them. But it actually, I think, plus the state has extended this to July, so this is all okay through July, and I expect before the end of the session, they will figure this out long term, because as Slap and Great rightly points out, I think it's most certainly increased people's accessibility to 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 meetings, and I think that's, that's all good. And it also, again, allows us to support more meetings at the same time, which is, you know, there's always so many to go around, and I mean, all the way around. So if somebody volunteers, there's also much. And you can actually hop from meeting to meeting on these in a way that you couldn't in. We all remember the days where there's five meetings literally going on in this building, right, where I'm in right now. But it's, it's, it doesn't work the same as it used to. So I would encourage that, you know, if the board's willing, obviously, to continue to do this, at least through this session. There are some moments when you do strategic planning, where you really should be in person. That's, that's an in-person kind of a meeting. That said, I think, if you're willing, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, so I know our next week's meeting is going to be on Zoom, and it sounds like we're leaning towards, at least for March, keeping it on Zoom. But we can continue that discussion. All right, any other warrant things, Chris? If not, you can move on to your town manager update. All right, any other warrant things, Chris? If not, you can move on to your town manager update.
No, and I just gave that already. So the Board of Health, I just found out officially lifted the indoor mask mandate in public buildings. So people are still free to wear them if they want to, but they, yeah, and that's okay, we have them. Uh, but they're not gonna be mandatory in public buildings, uh, I guess effective tomorrow. So, um, uh, we'll take signs. And again, if people want to wear them, that's completely okay, but they're not gonna be mandatory in public buildings. Uh, the Board of Health, uh, made that determination, uh, early this season.
Okay. Any question, other questions for Chris? All right, select board comment.
Just, um, does that also include opening up so everybody doesn't have to sign in every time they come into town hall?
Uh, well, that was, and that's actually been done more for, for safety purposes and stuff as well, so, um, and, and quite frankly, the, the folks we're using now, they're it's become a real nice partnership with Launch.
They're wonderful, by the way, they're great.
It, it, it's, it's a better realized partnership with Launch. We'll talk more about it offline, but, um, um, it, it's, it's been actually helpful, I mean, for most folks, because it, it, it gives, um, it, it's actually allowed for, I think, better customer service. If somebody knows, hey, we got some people coming up quick, or can you have them wait five minutes? We have somebody else up here. When I, we don't need them so much for contact tracing. That was one of the reasons we started with this. Um, I think we're gonna have to revisit it after the spring and figure out what to do next. But it has been a real successful, uh, program with Launch. I'd like to keep it at least through the rest of the spring, if we can.
Okay. Thank you. All right, select board comments. I said almost everything I wanted to say at the beginning of the meeting, but for everyone watching, there are several positions available on the town ballot this year. I hope that there are people out there considering throwing their name on the ballot, putting their hat into the ring. There's lots of good positions available, so consider pulling papers in the next few weeks. We will do Jean, then Jack, then Cory, then Diane.
Um, my only comment is I think we had a productive meeting at CPC, uh, yesterday night, and the, the full recording is there, but I'm also excited at the thought of, you know, maybe able to, maybe being able to do some more forward planning with CPC, where I think we're gonna have some big, exciting projects coming down the pike, um, and really be able to think about how to, you know, sort of proactively plot out um, CPC as well, in addition to the sort of ad hoc projects that we get. And so I think there's more exciting things coming along the way. And I just wanted to update people, um, that I think that's gonna probably happen with, starting within this year.
Okay, and if we want to have a specific CPC agenda item, Jean, let us know if we're ready for that.
Sure.
Okay, Jack?
Yeah, you know, we saw tonight something that is very heartening. A lot of people get discouraged. Does town government, does anybody listen? Should, can we make a difference? And I think we saw that citizens make a difference. People got, and however you may feel, and this isn't something, uh, uh, opposed to any particular town official, but we had an energized, mobilized, broad-based, um, group of citizens who were for the very respectful, very thoughtful, well-thought-out, and, and the town listened. And you know, when the town listens, then that means we need more of it. And it's just very heartening to see, and I want to congratulate everybody who had ea, any small part of it around town. You listened, you were respectful, you put forth well-thought-out positions, and you were successful. Congratulations. Democracy lives in Cohasset.
All right.
Sorry, I lost the thread. It was me next to Dan. It was me, I think. Okay, um, yeah, I, and just to kind of, uh, bounce off what Jack and Carrie said, you know, uh, uh, elections matter, but uncontested elections don't matter. So, um, you know, we have a, uh, a, a lot of our boards and committees have, you know, I, I ran an uncontested election. I don't include reds. Um, so, you know, if you want to be, uh, have your public officials held accountable, you gotta run. Um, but anyway, that's not what I want to talk about. We do have, we went through a lot of things today, but we did, there's always something else coming on the horizon, right? Um, so the big thing that I want us to talk about this month is the MBTA, uh, multifamily district rules. This is a uh, asteroid that's gonna hit our town, um, in which basically they came out with a number that Cohasset is required to have seven hundred and fifty units, not people, not bedrooms, seven hundred and fifty units of housing, multifamily housing, uh, surrounding our train station. Uh, if you know where our train station is, you know that the majority of the land around the train station is, um, either Wampe Duck State Park, or Hingham, or Golf Course.
Yeah.
Uh, so basically, that's gonna push seven hundred and fifty units of development down three A somewhere. Uh, and seven hundred and fifty units is about twenty-five percent more housing than we have now. Uh, this is enormous, and this is a problem. Uh, we only have until the end of this month for us to, you know, write back and give our comments on this ridiculous, you know, thing that we're gonna be required to meet. So I want to bring it up today because I want to see it on an agenda, but I also encourage everybody who's listening, and there's nobody left, unfortunately, uh, to talk to Sen- Senator Connor, uh, Representative Moschino. This is, this is a law they, they passed, and now it's being interpreted to make us do something which we just cannot survive. So, um, we gotta fix this now. That's the big thing that we gotta fix. It's coming down the pike. I know we don't have a lot of time to breathe, but we gotta, we gotta address it. Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. That is definitely going to be an agenda item coming up in the near future. Thanks for the heads up on that. All right, Diane?
Um, just, just to play off that, yes, um, I, I would like to see that on a, as soon as possible agenda, just to get a briefing on exactly, um, what this legislation is and, and what kind of response is necessary from, from either the town, capital T, or the community, before the end of March. So I, I do, I would like to see it, um, as soon as possible. Um, the only other thing I wanted to bring up, and only because it just, um, flashed on my radar early this morning, and this is more to, for Jean, is, was whether or not we should be or, or, um, addressing the, um, Norfolk County Commissioner, CIO position at the Register of Deeds, which I know that a lot of, um, other communities are getting their select boards to make a statement on. We don't, we very rarely do that, so I just think it's worth some consideration, probably with, from Eugene as, um, the liaison uh, to the commissioners.
It's a good question. I know we.
Whether we want to enter that freight or not. And that's.
And that can, we can weigh.
I won't comment on it now. I think we can, you know, we can talk about it.
Exactly. I just think it's something to keep on our radar or not. So, that's it for me.
Okay, we do not have any minutes to approve and don't have any.
Three copies, I think.
Um, come on.
Jack, it's time for your moment.
No, no, I'm, I'm challenging Cory, you know, we have.
Motion to stay on for another thirty minutes?
Oh, God, wait a minute. We've got, we have to talk about this. Motion to adjourn. Oh, we have to vote on Cory's motion first.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn and a second roll call vote, Jack.
That great night.
Gray Evans eye.
Jeanne Lee Dibbled.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night, everybody.